Good afternoon. Bienvenidos, welcome. I called to order the school board retreat of the Beaverton School Board on February 20th, no, what are we on? February 22nd at 2:10. In attendance, we have all board members with, all six board members with Susan Greenberg Seven joining us online. I will now hand it over to our colleagues Erica and Mike to lead, get us started in our retreat. First part is around board goals.
Excellent, thank you. We are excited to be back with you. We were reflecting where we've been with the Beaverton School District Board members. And when we first were working with you, we were talking about the roles and responsibilities. We were talking about the characteristics of high-functioning teams. From there, we moved into working agreements, and we're now in a place where we're ready to move into goal-setting with you all. And today, what we're going to be looking at are both short-term goals, what can be accomplished from now until the end of the school year, as well as working on putting together a plan for setting more long-term goals as you move into the 23-24 school year. So that's what we're going to be talking with you about today. Plenty of opportunity for input along the way, and we're going to have Erica take the next portion of this.
I'm happy to be back and see your new digs here. It looks really nice. Everything looks new. One of the things I wanted to have you all maybe go back in the Wayback Machine and look back in time. When you were running your campaign, and this is something that I will have you discuss with the board member that's next to you, so maybe you'll just have a little conversation and then you'll share out. But when you were campaigning to be a board member, at that time, you probably were running on specific issues or a specific problem that you saw, or challenge, or an opportunity, and you really wanted to make a difference in that space. And so you had maybe a specific goal to achieve in your campaign trail. Of course, at that moment, you're running as an individual, and it's just what you think, right? What you're aspiring to contribute being on the board. So with your partner board member there, just share a little bit between each other. What was those, how was that experience for you at that time? What were you running on? And now that you've been on the board for a little bit, how has that influenced your thinking? How has that changed? Or maybe it hasn't, or maybe now you've thought about other things that you didn't know before. So I'm going to give you maybe just like two to three minutes so that each can share, and then we'll give you an opportunity to share out. Okay? I'll give you one more minute to wrap up your thoughts. Okay, I know this conversation can get really juicy. All right. So we're going to have an opportunity for each group, maybe, I don't know, I guess maybe you can do it by group or each person. If you feel like you have something to share, make it a little brief, share it, and we'll start over here. Tammy?
About what Justice shared with me, or about what I shared?
You can do, I'll speak for, yeah, on here.
Yeah. I think one thing I shared is that, and just to be very succinct, is that I feel like I came into this kind of full of, you know, ideas and let's go get them, whatever. It reminded me of that proverb, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, you know, bring your community with you. And so I'm working at building those community ties that I think are going to help us go far. So that was one thing I've learned.
I mean, for me, I think the, just figuring out like the ins and outs of our role and the time that we have and how we can be effective in that time. So, you know, the ideas of like how you're going to start talking about something when you're campaigning are a lot different than like, we have to fit it into the, what's happening here, and like steps and what have you. So, I'm good, but it's been interesting, like getting on board.
So one of the things that was my priority when I was running was about diverse hiring. And so far, I can say that the district is doing well in that area in making sure, Susan can attest to that, that they have been good at opening the pool, the hiring pool, to include, you know, people from all diverse backgrounds. So I'm happy that that is happening. And then another thing I discussed with Karen was the area of our disciplinary practices. I was very vocal on that when I was running. And the times that we used to have school reports, I always saw, you know, that the changes that I needed to see, I'm not seeing them as reflected in the numbers that I was seeing in the reports. So that is one area that I see room for growth and room for improvement. Yeah.
One of the areas that I remember talking a lot about in looking at Hillsborough and thinking, we want to do that, is around community involvement and how community voice. And we, being a board member, we can't, it's not our job to tell people, like our staff, what to do or how to do. More it's thinking about policy, talking with Gustavo, the superintendent, and figuring out those pieces. And so that piece of, it's great that our community thought that community voice and community participation is important, and it's in our strategic plan. So that allows us more lever to just be like, oh, it's in our strategic plan, what are we doing? And thinking about it that way and/or with other pieces. Another one was every student belongs, the state policy. I ran on that saying that everybody, every student should belong in our spaces, and so what are we doing? And we have a new reporting system, and that wasn't me doing that, but it was like, it was something that as we were implementing our every student belong policy, that those pieces came out, I think.
When I ran my campaign, and I think now it's even hard to imagine COVID time, so safety was in the forefront, and also providing quality education for all kids, that was also important to me. And using different levels of government to help, like city government, county, our school, getting all of us and the community together to make the best use of what we can for other kids. So that was at the forefront at that time.
I think like everyone, the student achievement and seeing if we can make the system work just a little bit better today than it was yesterday to help even more students achieve their highest potential. So, and my experience so far is learning the system from a different perspective of, okay, so leveraging that makes this lever go, which makes this, okay. And then, oh, by the way, you have different, like a different role, and what does that mean? And what is a retreat versus a work session versus an executive session versus a business session? So kind of what Justice was saying about just getting on-boarded, the experience matches, but it's just learning the pieces and figuring out the levers that we can use.
Great. I think that, I mean, all your answers are really a lot that I can relate to, but also just knowing that you have a very specific role, and like the way that you influence this system is in a different way than a teacher would or superintendent or counselor. There's a specific way that you have to learn to like navigate how to make those changes, I think, to what Justice said, you know? How do I push or look for ways to engage within the role that I'm in? And also moving from as an individual, these are the things that I thought were really important, or I was looking for that really mattered, and now I'm part of a team. And collectively together, how do we work together to then set goals together? I think, this is, is this you? No, I was just going to go back to the one before. That's one, one of the things I was thinking is now you have to get buy-in from all the other board members, so that, as Tammy said, going together, instead of going on your own, you're just going to be dragging and pulling people. If everybody can be on the same page, you're going to get further. So, yeah.
And doing that within all these constraints of we're not supposed to talk to each other and more than choose and not, we can't, you know, share, like share information unless we're in public meetings. And this is a space that we have to share those ideas with each other.
Yep, yep. So today, what we're going to be doing in our time together is we were thinking about having some short-term goals for you all for this year, things that are attainable, that we think are easy to achieve during this time. And then looking at the criteria for a longer-term goal. So we're not going to set the actual goals, but we're going to talk about and discuss what criteria do you want to put on yourselves to kind of vet? Because every one of you will have your own ideas of what goals you should have as a board. And remember, goals as a board are goals that you put on to yourselves as a group and team. It's not things that you're going to task staff to do, it's things you're going to task yourself to do as a group. And so you're going to set a criteria of like, what are the things, how should we vet all of the ideas that come out of this group? What is going to be a priority or something that is, an idea might get elevated because it has these components. So we'll get to that in the latter part. But before we get there, we're going to do short-term goals.
As we thought about the short-term goals, it would be one thing if you would have all been elected and ready to go during the retreat, and you were elected but needed some time to do some team-building. And so as we reached this point in the year, we wanted to be thinking about things that are manageable and things that we could accomplish between February and the end of the school year. That will then allow us time to roll into a longer-term process that would guide the next, the 24 or 25 school year.
And just, so for some background for the board, leadership met, when we met in the planning of this, we were thinking like, what can we, we want to make sure, as we strengthen our board and our board muscle, like learning how to work together and do this work together, we want to continuously improve. And that's where we came up with that short-term goal for this year, to get that muscle, to learn how to do this work together. And then that way, it'll prepare us for next year to have some longer-term goals when we start. So we've had some practice before going on to that. So just, what you said, but just wanted to put that context that we'd been working on this with you, not that you just came up and thought, oh, this is what we're going to do, but we'd actually been working with leadership and superintendent on this.
One of the things that we talked about is before I share the suggestion for a short-term goal, one of the things that we talked a lot about is how, if you look at the session that we're currently in, the legislative session that we're currently in, and probably more important, the long session next year, Beaverton School District is uniquely positioned to have some real influence in this process and uniquely positioned to be a go-to source of information for legislators. If you look at the transition that's taking place in Portland Public, if you look at the transition that, they're well into it, it was taking place in Salem. And then if you look at the stability that the Beaverton School District has and the influence that they have statewide, that you all have statewide, there really is an opportunity to make, to make a big impact here. So what we're going to suggest is that when we look at the short-term goals, is that a lot of your time be spent building relationships with your local legislators. And I know some of you have probably already started that as individuals. It's different to move from that individual relationship to a board relationship with legislators. And one of the things that can happen that I think is really important is that as a board, you can build your understanding around the issues that your legislators are facing. And oftentimes legislators don't get that from their constituents. They, what they get are a lot of ask, or they get a lot of trying to sway them in a certain direction, but they don't get a lot of seeking first to understand what's going on statewide and what the legislators are dealing with. I think when you seek to understand their point of view, you also have the opportunity to build understanding around the issues that are facing the Beaverton School District. It is, it is unique when you are a large district in the state of Oregon, some of the, a lot of the issues are very different, even the funding issues are different from some of the smaller districts across the state. With that said, there are a number of issues that are true district to district regardless of size. So again, I think Beaverton School District uniquely positioned. I think there's an opportunity to influence conversation that's going to be happening among legislators. But before that happens, there's got to be a building of a relationship, and we have some ideas on what you can do to, to start accomplishing that.
I was just going to add, another thing is that Melissa Potter is also now part of the Legislative Policy Committee for OSVA, so you have also a direct board member from your district representing you as this larger body of advocacy. And I'm sure there'll be opportunities that you'll come back and share back with your board, like what's happening in that space. But also, as Mike said, as a big district, a lot of people pay attention to what's happening in your district and what you're doing, and want to hear also in that space. So it's just a unique, I think, opportunity for Beaverton.
Also, we thought as leadership, this would be a nice way to also build leadership within our board, so it's not, you know, leadership necessarily leading this, but we have Melissa in that position, we also have, I think, is it Susan and, I was going to call you Sunita, and Tammy on a, like, a committee that looks at legislation. So like, we can build leadership within our team as a board as we build this muscle together.
I think that's the other thing that's unique for Beaverton, is that if you look at the visibility and access that members of the Beaverton School Board already have, just because of the positioning that they have in the state. that members of the Beaverton School Board already have, just because of the positioning that they have in the state of various committees. But then you also look at the um access and influence that Gustavo has with the rest of the state. It is, it is a prime opportunity to have the ear of legislators and to help them understand the issues that you're facing. I think sometimes what we forget as school districts is to also be really deliberate about building that relationship with OSBA as well. And if you are a leader at OSBA, you are getting pulled in so many different directions. Um, whether it's metro area school districts, or it's rural districts, or whether it's small districts or large districts, it feels like OSBA is always being hit with a different ask or a different angle from all of those districts. So being deliberate about building that relationship, understanding what they're trying to accomplish, helping them understand what you're trying to accomplish, and to influence their, their behaviors and their perception of things, um, that's going to serve you and the rest of the state really well. So when, when we think about the suggested short-term goals for February to June, we would suggest that you focus on building relationships with your legislators. We would suggest that you focus on building relationships with OSBA. And that you get super specific and deliberate about that. And have it a group, uh, make those group events or group activities, um, or divide and conquer so that, um, so you have great visibility that way. When we started, first of all, let me, let me get your thoughts on that. When you think about the short-term goal that we've just shared here, what are your thoughts on that? What, what comes to mind for you?
Yeah, that was my question.
Uh, I mean, I guess I'll go first. I mean, I think for me, I think it's a, um.
Oh, Susan's coming on too. Just letting people know. Go ahead, Justice.
Oh, okay. Uh. If you have not, you know, met, I guess, like even like on the state level, our local reps and local senators that either are, you know, cover some part of our district, just having a meeting with them, right? Like, I mean, and is that the goal? Because when we talk about goals, I always go to like, is the goal, uh, what's the timing? And then what detail, you know, and like, is that, uh, each of us having an individual connection with, with, uh, I mean, I know because of the, the meeting rules, more than three of us can't. But, but like, is that, uh, and like, I think fleshing out some of the details of what establishing a relationship means, right? If that's just the basics of, I've met with you, you've kind of, me, I have your number, you have my number. We have some um chain of events. And for those that haven't done that type of thing before, I mean, on the board, because everyone here does a lot of work, but maybe not necessarily that work, um, you know, work, working through those, like, what's the really effective way? Especially with other legislatures, legislators that have different responsibility, right? And so um the way that we might interact with constituents is not the same way that our state reps or our state senators do. You know, and, and there's a different expectation to, just to the board. Like, they, I mean, we're expected to respond, but they're like expected to respond in a bit different way than we are, at least in terms of convention. So I think it's important to think about that, too.
And I, I think part of it was planning, like, we'd have a group of us plan or a group from our board plan what that might look like and what trainings we would all need, what materials would we need? What um, um, issues would be like the district, as a district, we wanna move forward to bring forward to, like, what's needed by the district, working with the superintendent. Um, I see Susan has her hand up. Make sure you unmute because we can't hear you. Um, we'll have our team check, see if we can, um. You look unmuted from here, but I can't. And you think you're unmuted. Does anybody else wanna go while? Nita, and then we'll come back to you, Susan, as soon as we figure out the sound piece.
You know, like what Justice is saying, I felt that when I came in onto the board new. Like, what, what are we, make relationships with legislators? So what does that mean, right? What do you do? Um, there are simple things that helps, I guess. You know, like when you make a meeting or you meet them in a group. I think when I went to DC, small things, having your own card, we don't have, we should have that. You know, like each board member should have a card saying that we are from BSD. The other thing that Karen, um, Gustavo and Carrie did for me was to have a one-pager over federal legislative issues. So I knew exactly what I was going to talk to each legislator when I went in there. I did some research on my own, too. And then, you know, you are, you are equipped with the information that you wanna provide them. When you meet someone, always send them an email afterwards with, and I did that with my one-pager. So having a one-pager kind of helps to make sure that these are our main goals that we want to come across. This is what BSD is, you know, wanting to happen. And that really helped me, so.
And that's a great point, I think, with the part of, it's not what Karen thinks we should add to this, and this is what we're moving to the legislators, or what we're gonna talk to them about. But it's as a board, we need to um think about what that is and, and talk with our superintendent. Like, they prepared something with, these are the issues that are coming up federally or state level, and this is what we're kind of working on.
And I would add that why we thought this was a good um short-term goal is because you're gonna have to do a lot more advocacy next year. Next year is a long session, which is the big, it's the, um, and honestly, I think it's gonna be a great opportunity to talk about fundamentally how we fund public education next um session. And so before you go and, you know, we have our one-pager and we have all that, first, let's just meet each other. And like, before I go ask you for something, I wanna like get to know you and like, what is important to you, Senator or Representative? Like, what, why did they run? What, what, what platform? And a lot of people always run on education. So uh, that's a great conversation starter, um, because you're a school board member. So we wanted to think about like smaller, and you have some ideas up there, but smaller, like little nuggets from, something that's attainable, like a smart, like, that's attainable from now until June, which is, you have a short amount of period of time. What can you do as a board during that time to kind of start nurturing those relationships? So we had some examples up there.
One of the things that we've seen be really effective is to invite legislators in for a school lunch and have them sit with kids, I mean, in the cafeteria, have them sit with kids, um, do the whole lunch thing. And uh, make sure it's like a pizza day, a safe day. Um, but do, do the school lunch and invite the principal into afterwards to sit, sit in a back room and go over some of the things that they're proud of. Invite them to share some of the challenges that they're seeing. And one of the things that we know for sure is going to happen, we know that legislators are going to call Gustavo, they're going to call Mike Schofield, and they're going to be engaged in conversations with them when we get into the long session. Um, both of those two folks are um, are really well-known in the district. And they've got a lot of credibility, or in the state, and as well as a lot of credibility throughout the state. And our goal is to create that same credibility in that same passion, so that board members are also called. Legislators will tell you over and over again, we, we hear from the people that are paid to do their job all the time. We hear from superintendents, we hear from CFOs. What they don't hear from oftentimes are students, and they don't hear from other electeds. And when they, when they talk about those things that make the biggest difference, those are the two issues. Of course, you need Gustavo and Mike to weigh in and to, you know, help with, someone with a huge understanding of the, the funding formula. Of course, you've gotta have that. But you've also got to be spun up enough as board members that you can engage in that conversation and steer them in the right direction and help them understand what the challenges are that districts are facing. So when we, when we think about having a legislator out to a school, there's some, there's some easy wins there. And it is what Eric is talking about, it's building that relationship right now. So then when it gets to the tough conversations during the long session, you will be a go-to for them. And you're going to be someone that they respect and they, they believe and they've got a relationship with. In addition to things like coming to the school or inviting them to the school or having those one-on-one conversations, what are some other things that, that might be a good idea from now until the end of June with legislators?
I see Susan still has her hand up, maybe.
Yeah, let me just try, try it again. Okay, so I appreciate this, I appreciate the conversation, and I put in um comments, uh, um.
We can't see your comments, so.
Oh, okay, no wonder. So in the past, we've actually had breakfast with legislatures. Um, and I think other districts do that as well. And even after the session, I, I think it would be a, uh, an idea to have a breakfast with BSD um, with, if it's possible to have with the entire school board, I don't know if it is, but to uh reach out and um communicate our concerns as a school, board and district.
Great idea.
Is there anything about more than three of us meeting with somebody if we're talking about school district stuff? Or is that not an issue?
You're not voting, yeah, you're not.
Yeah, you're not making a decision.
Right.
So you would be okay. And a reminder, when you invite legislators into some type of an event, make sure you give them the opportunity to talk as well as, as legislators or people that are always need to campaign or be thinking about what their constituents are thinking. Give them an opportunity to share as well. You don't wanna make it entirely their show, but you do want it to be um a two-way street. Other ideas?
Um, I, you can go onto each legislator's website and ask to be part of their news feed. And so anytime they are hosting a coffee chat, so I'm on seven different, so I get notices. And it's hard because they try to, you know, it's in short sessions. So they're just trying to power through them as quickly as possible, they're on Saturdays. And so I wonder if there is a way for us to get a, a schedule and, you know, okay, can somebody go attend this one? Can Beaverton be represented at our, can our representatives? Um, kind of like how we have the school schedule where we're gonna visit all of our schools throughout the whole year. Let's see if we can get one school board member at each school visit. And maybe we could add our legislators to those school visit um opportunities. But then flip the table and look at all of those coffee chats and as they become available. And it doesn't necessarily have to just be school board members, but it could be staff, too. There might be really wonderful staff who could represent Beaverton. So no matter who it is and where it is and when it is, Beaverton's represented in a positive way. And we're not going there for an ask. We're just going there and we just say, we're just here for you, wanted to hear about what's going on, and so good, thank you. And then we walk away without an ask.
I think that's so important, too. Um, I, I think legislators and I think to some extent, um, local businesses, when they see a school person coming at them, they know they're going to be asked for something. And to, to be disciplined enough not to do that and invest in that relationship and understand where they're coming from. I think it's a great point.
One thing, Mike, just a suggestion would be to invite, have student voice specifically at the, the older kids, but also you can do it for elementary and middle school kids. And have it be, uh, have a conversation prior to that meeting to be able to help the students get ready and prepared. But it is our voice and they can, you know, sit in a circle. And it's always good to have elected officials meet with kids and hear from their mouths, so.
Great, thank you.
So what do you see as our steps um for today? Are we going to brainstorm or?
I, I wanted to do, I wanted to affirm and see is, do you see this as the right short-term goal for you all? Does this feel like we're in the right ballpark? Or do you have other ideas for, for what some other short-term goals might be?
Melissa and then Sunita?
I like the bigger picture of in our space, we have influence at the state level. And then at the same time, how do we keep honoring and respecting? Because we all have such great different perspectives. So how do we work that muscle too in a short-term goal? And I don't know if that's more, that's a soft skill goal rather than a, um, maybe it's not as measurable. But I also think we really have a great team and we all bring different perspectives. So how do we keep nurturing that too?
Yeah, and one of the things that you, that you want is to have, um, to have it be measurable. So you could say, in June, we attended this many coffee chats, we had this many visits of legislative. So you actually have metrics that you can measure yourself. Were we successful in whatever it is that you choose to measure yourselves? To say like, did we achieve this as a team? Did we had coverage? Did we do what we said we were gonna do? And that's kind of how you start practicing that. Because again, remember, this is a short-term one. In August, when you have your retreat, you're gonna set your, your legal. And you're gonna start that one, you'll have enough time to kind of plan for that.
When I think I heard you, oh, sorry, Sunita, you were next. Um, but I heard Melissa's question was around, um, we have different points of view, um, perhaps on our, our board. And some are the same, some are different. And so, um, I think it's that piece of, we're not there to share our point of view. We're there to share about our district. Oh, we have this many schools. These are things that we're, you know, just to, we're not asking, we're not, um, I think that's what I understood you say, too.
Yeah, and I, I think that's an important distinction as well. Um, if you look at this first phase as relationship building, there will be opportunities to, of course, share what the Beaverton goal is. And I, I would guess that as a district, you typically engage in legis, in setting legislative priorities before the long session rolls in. And um, that's where you'll put a one-pager together. And these are our three things that every time we're in front of a legislator, we're going to talk about these things. Um, it doesn't mean that also some of your own thoughts don't creep into that. But, but there's a, there's a plan and there's a, there's a focus on, on your main priorities.
Yeah, I think later you will have your one-pager that you all come together and decide. But right now, till as a short-term, it's just a relationship piece and introduction because you are still fairly a newer board together.
Questions?
This is just, I, I, when I'm listening to all these ideas, I feel that one of the goals could be that we create maybe a Google sheet and put in all of our ideas, like Susan had breakfast. She had about coffee chats and how we can expand it and make it even better. Like, I had gone, somebody had invited elected officials in their home to have like a, uh, coffee time together. It was nice to meet them, get to know them that way. And um, we can come up with all of our ideas and put it, and so all the board members can add to that and make it even better and see if they can actually do, you know, do something with that. That was.
Tammy?
Um, with respect to building the relationships with legislators, um, I have a couple of um colleagues in other local elected bodies that we've thought about having sort of a, a joint coffee chat with the community. And just, you know, so we're building relationship with each other and meeting the community. Maybe we invite, you know, somebody from Salem to join us in that. But um, I guess, uh, other short-term potential goals, and this isn't related to relationship building. Um, but I was, um, I was wanting to, to kind of um circle back to what Karen was talking about with wanting to recreate what Hillsborough does with respect to these um community groups and formalizing it. And that is definitely a long-term goal. But I wonder if there's a way for us to um lean into our existing, um, like, I, I don't know that we've ever heard from the Equity Advisory Committee. And we've also had um one-time, uh, sort of the Student Advisory Committee to, to Dr. Baldair's, um, a, a student presented. But I'm just wondering if, you know, we have, you know, we're not building these community groups, we have some. And how can we leverage that right now? How can we start hearing from them? Um, and so I guess that's a question. And I don't know if that's something that we could accomplish in the next few months. But I would love to be able to hear more from the community. And if we already have an avenue to some community groups, I'd love to see what that looks like.
So I'm hearing like a, um, a separate short-term goal around communities, what you're saying.
And, and maybe what it would look like now is that you're not building any new, but you're just hearing from the ones that already exist. Maybe there's an opportunity in a future board meeting that they come and give you a presentation of what they did this year. And you just learn more about them. That could be an easy thing to attain this year.
And I heard you also mention the um possibly having a coffee, coffee chats with other elected officials and community at the same time. And I think what I'm hearing us, you, you present initially is just building that relationship with, with community members. But if you were to hold space for a community with other elected officials, I think you could do that as an individual, but not as a board member representing BSD, right? Because that would be, because what you would say if you were representing BSD in that situation, then it would need to be um the board chair or leadership appointing somebody to be? Or is that, you can just have, it depends what happens in the meeting, too, I guess, I would say, I don't know.
I guess it, it depends if you organize it together. Like, if the, between the district and that legislative um person, you decide what the joint meeting will be and what you. will be and what you will cover, maybe you're sharing your strategic plan to the community with your goal. So it's not creating new, you know, discussion, just presenting information about Beaverton. Tam?
I guess I was viewing it more as like a coffee chat, but an interdisciplinary coffee chat, you know? Somebody from city council, somebody from the Parks Department and that sort of thing. So I wouldn't think that would break any of our meeting laws.
No, and coffee chats are really just, you're listening, you're not deciding on anything, you're hearing from constituents.
But it could, it can create some synergy, you know, like, oh, THPD is doing this. How about we see what we can do to work together?
Yeah, it could be another way of doing it.
So for example, right now, the mayor brings these agencies together right now for this exactly the same thing. So, but it's not the elected, it's actually the agencies come together with some inner government folks like, you know, Dr. Perez and leadership shows up and other representatives from those organizations already meet on a regular basis with, but the mayor of Beaverton convenes that. But I think what Director Carpenter is talking about is more of a Washington County, maybe coalition and just having a broader view of the area because we are bigger than Beaverton.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you guys have a lot of really great ideas. We're jotting down as fast as we can, just the different thoughts that you have. I think we just want to like.
And I think Justice wanted to share something too.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I guess, yeah, by closing on this, I mean, so on this particular goal, like I said, I think this is a very realistic thing that we can do, that we have control over as board members primarily about us scheduling and determining like what we would want to do. I think the communication part is around, one, that this is just to establish relationships. And, you know, maybe it's a flow, maybe it's, you know, maybe in pairs, some of us all try to have one or two check-ins and then we have maybe a cap, like we're going to do a breakfast. And it's all this has to happen after the short session because no one has time to talk to us right now. And then I think just wearing my other hat that I wear when I'm not here, you know, elected at different levels talking to each other, we assume a lot more than actually happens in terms of how much any of us talk, I mean, we talk to each other because we're here. But so, you know, having a, like a joint community sit down as elected, you can have an interface with the community and just you set limits, right? Like that I'm not coming here to like present around like what the board's doing and like where we're going. Like I'm here as like, I'm a community member, you're a community member, what's happening in the community? Or a speaker that may be relevant to everyone informing the community, like as down the road things where we could collaborate, even to support, you know, concurrent issues that are happening in our space, right? So those would just be things to think about. And then, and I'd be happy to help with figuring out.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Stuff.
Right now, you have the, the short session is still happening, so you have time to kind of organize yourselves and decide what of those activities you want to aim for or work towards and then schedule them and start sending invitations to them.
If we start thinking about what next steps would be to make this happen, is, just as I'm thinking about it and as we met with board leadership, we were wondering, is there someone that would like to take the lead on this in terms of just starting to sketch this out? In terms of what these activities, Eric and I, of course, will get back to you these ideas and put it in a form that's easy to understand, but is there somebody that wants to take the lead on starting to calendar these kinds of things out and reaching out to other board members and just putting a plan together?
I can give it a go. Oh, Susan.
I was going to say, I'd be happy to work with another school board member and like do something together.
So it sounds like Melissa and Susan. You can say it. Unmute and say what you were going to say when you were muted.
No one else made eye contact, so it sounds like those.
I'd be happy to help. I'm willing to help.
And Justice willing to help too.
I don't know if I can steer the ship, but I guess.
Cool.
Well, and I can just do a first draft and then it'll, there'll be three of us, so we can email with three of us and the two of you. Right? So we can just, and then how does that work then? Do you come back and present it to us or do we share it with leadership and Gustavo?
You three can share it together.
Right.
And then present to your board as a large.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, that's what I would suggest as well, is that we will share all the notes and some ideas and then you take it from there and the three of you share it and you're off and running, start making adjustments to it.
So maybe when you three can meet and figure out what a timeline is for something like that, because thinking about our board meetings, when they are our work sessions, we can leave some time in the agenda to have you all present what you're thinking.
If we were to help folks get ready and maybe target the, when is the work session in April? When is that? Or maybe March? Well, that's coming right up.
Let's look at Carrie. When's the next?
What is early April? Early April for the work session?
I know Melissa and schedules and I don't know, but I'm thinking that March 5th might be just a, they can have like a phone conversation. I think it would be okay if we had space in the March 5th one or we don't have space.
April, oh, wow, okay.
So maybe, do you think, do the three of you think it's doable to have something? Just some ideas or?
Yeah, we could sketch something out by.
I know, right?
Because part of it is welcoming, I just wanted to verify that what I'm offering, I would offer the school visits as part of our offer to legislators, saying, here's our, all of our school visits between now and June, you're welcome to join any of them because they're already scheduled, the principals know, it's already on everybody's calendar, right? So we could just invite them to those spaces, right?
The only thing that would be different about that school visits is for us to get to know some of the one-on-one, so it would be some preparation and it would be a different purpose for those. So I think what might be good, what I'm envisioning and seeing if that's what you all three think, Susan too, is that you would take all the ideas that were, that we talked about today and maybe some of your own that you're thinking about, whether it's school visits or something else. And it might be good to kind of come up with like, here's a, here's a menu of ideas, whether it's, if it's for lunch or coffee chats or whatever, here's some possible, we could run some possible ideas by Gustavo to see if those dates might work. Or maybe you're working with Gustavo to see if some, what dates are available or something like that. So coming with a draft plan or some sort of.
Yeah, I think, I think if we three can talk, I can, we can whittle it down. Because we wanted, I think we want to stick to setting up a way for us to meet everybody. And it's like, I think 10 people.
Right.
In terms of state reps and state senators and then seven of us. So how do we pair that off? And then maybe have, like, maybe have some kind of closing, some kind of space where we could, for those that are available, because folks may not be available. Have a final touch point, but I don't know if we need to move to like inviting them to schools yet. I think it's more like.
I don't think so, but you could have a plan and then, I mean, in some dreamy way and if there were some possible dates that work for you guys and we could see who else could join you on one of those dates or something like that. Susan, what were you going to say?
I was going to say that in the past, I mean, again, this is in the past and I don't mean to live in the past, but I think this would help is having a staff person be part of it and Carrie would be the logical person to be part of our discussion.
She's smiling right now, so I think that's a yes. Oh, she went like this, she touched her nose, so that's a yes. Oh, oh, that's a no? Okay, that means yes in my language.
And I am, I hate to be a party pooper, but I, I'm going to try and connect back in, but I have a meeting that I need to attend, so I apologize.
Okay, well, we'll see you in a little bit.
We will send our information to Carrie so that she can share it out and help work on scheduling. And we'll have a number of ideas for you to work into your plan as part of your menu and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Let's move into, sorry.
Just as I want to confirm, so me, Melissa and Susan are going to have a conversation and try to, with Carrie and try to have at least like a sketch of something by the 5th.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure what the plan was.
Yep.
And then we'll, yep, and we'll add it to our agenda for the 5th to have a conversation. Go team!
Yeah, thank you for volunteering to do that. That's good stuff. Let's start talking about the long-term goals. And as we think about the long-term goals. Oftentimes, boards end up adopting their long-term goals or starting to hash out their long-term goals during their August retreat. That's pretty common flow of things. And one of the things that sometimes slows that down or delays it by a couple of months is that there hasn't been the opportunity to think through the criteria by which goals and ideas are filtered to arrive at a consensus as to what your goals would be. So that's one of the things we wanted to start talking about today, is start talking about the criteria that you would put in place so that as you start to gather ideas about what your goals will be for that, for those next 12 months, that you've got, you've got a filter in place that allows you to make a good decision there or to make a decision that you can all agree on. Going, again, going into the 24, 25 school year, you're going to have in there a long session and it's going to be an important time. We've already started to hear over and over again about the school formula, about what are some of the changes that need to happen in education, what's on the horizon for education in Oregon with the new governor. And that's, you want to be able to influence all of that. You want to have a voice in that process. So as we look at the long-term goals, we wanted to get you started here just in terms of some suggestions. And one of the things that often works well is when you're thinking about the criteria, put those in the form of questions. So if you, let's say you come up with an idea and then you start asking yourself these questions to filter that idea. Is it within the role of board to address this goal? Is the goal connected to our strategic plan? And you can read them there. Start thinking about what are the questions that you could ask yourself to see if that's going to be a viable goal and a goal that you could potentially reach consensus on as a board as you move into the 24, 25 school year. As you think about these, these criteria here, these were just starters to get everyone thinking about it. What we wanted to do is to give you a little time and you can just, you can just work with a partner and start thinking about additional criteria to consider when setting the goals. And if you would put these in the form of a question, that would be helpful. And you can just, you can just write them down on paper there and then we're going to gather them on chart paper and trying to come up with some themes after this. So if you can be prepared to share your two best criteria out at the end of our, maybe 10 minutes here for, give you time to work, then we'll start putting those into themes and we'll try and to get some consensus on what that criteria is. Any questions before we get started on this?
Mike, can you put that previous, yeah. Mike, can you put that previous slide up?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That was really helpful, thank you.
Would it be helpful for you to have chart paper?
Also, I really would like this slide for, I don't, I don't know that I found these slides, so this one I think is very like helpful for me to think about long-term if we could have that one.
We will get those to you.
Perfect, thank you.
We'll give you seven or 10 minutes. I'm just going to set the timer. Oh, gotcha, okay.
We'll give you a minute or so to start wrapping up your thoughts. I know. We said it a little early so we can, you know, get everybody back. Okay, we're gonna get ready to share. No, you can leave it there so you all can see them.
Okay. So if you could share a couple of your best ideas regarding criteria and we will, we're obviously going to collect these, but we'll start trying to identify some of the themes that will likely come up. Sound like a plan? You want to start over here?
I thought the ones that we had up there was really good because we had to really work on to find another one.
Okay, good.
And so, yeah, and we kind of worked, we kind of worked backwards. You know, we know that we have to do long-term facility planning. So we came up with the criteria that does this goal help the school district be a better steward of our limited resources?
Hmm, okay.
So that, we came up with one.
Excellent. Thank you.
So we also asked the question around equity. How is this goal going to be implemented equitably? And we looked at the, our equity lens that we use as a school district and also we consider using, thinking about the OD equity lens as well, which would ask the questions about the voices that have been represented and who the decision is going to benefit our burden and, you know, all of that. But we would like to see the bigger picture. Since this is going to be a long-term goal, it's important that we measure or rather understand how this goal is going to be implemented considering and also put into effect our equity lens when, when doing that. So I can let Karen discuss more about the student impact piece of the criteria. Thank you.
Extra points for color coding, too. Really, really well done there.
It's the kinder teacher in me.
Okay.
Nobody said we were getting extra points for. Anyway, so, so we had a couple items. One was one, do we have the means to measure our success? You know, or just measure the goal? So if it's, if it's a goal that requires some level of assessment, do we have the right things to do that? So we don't set goals that we can't actually prove that we did it.
Yeah.
Just, just thinking. Second is if that, do we have, who would be responsible for the activity to impact the goal? So like we had that conversation about the short-term goal that like we have control of the activity as the board members. But if there's something as a board we're setting, I think we really need to be like, who's going to do the stuff related to this? You know, it might be us, it might be some part of the administration, it might be, you know, whatever, whatever the case may be. But I think we need to be clear about that. And then the other point we got to was just who and how we're setting our priorities in a larger, general sense? Like making sure that our priority-setting process is like consistent. Yeah, accessible.
Excellent. Thank you. I was going to ask if any, anybody else had any additional ones that they wanted to share? We don't want to limit your thinking here, but any others that you want to throw out there? All right.
So one of the things I wanted to just ground us back again is, and this is, again, we're having this conversation now, but you're going to revisit this theme in August when you start setting your goals. So these are the goals that you're going to set for you all as a board. Because your, your district goals come from your strategic plan, what you're doing as a bigger organization. But your board goals are, I think, to, your point, Justice, is who is responsible? And who's going to be doing this work? And it's not work that we assign to staff. It's, it's goals that we put on ourselves to achieve. So then at the next year, then we're going to measure ourselves as board members or as, as a board, do we feel that we accomplished that goal? And you actually only have, I was thinking you have a year to accomplish these goals, so they have to be achievable. That's the other thing. It can't be, you know, something really grandiose that you're like, I wish we could, you know, solve this problem. It has to be something that you can do between August, when you have your retreat, and June that you'll measure and see if, if you were able to accomplish that.
So Eric, can you give an example of a Hillsborough?
Yeah. I was just going to say that. So for example, one of the things that when we first started, one of the things that we wanted to do was have a better relationship with other local electeds. So as a board, we wanted to have better relationships and partnerships. So one of the things that we had administration help us with, but we did as well, is having joint meetings with like Cornelius City Council, North Twain City Council, Hillsborough City Council. And we had joint meetings where we showed up in their space to cement and also just establish a relationship where there wasn't one before. Another one was we really wanted to be engaging and out in the community. We wanted to be visible board members. So what we did is we mapped out, we cal, we had a calendar, we had administration help us with the scheduling of the event. But then we divvy up who showed up to what events so that we made sure there was always a district board member that was present at these community events. Because we wanted to be visible in our community. So that was a goal that we set for ourselves. Another one is we wanted to be better at legislative advocacy. So we had one of our board members become part of the LPC. We also had a training or a task, had some board members attend conferences. So that was another goal that we, it, it takes, it's part of our time, you know, that we're putting into attending those events. But that was something that, for us, we wanted to understand that process better. And so we invested, I don't know if you all had a, have a budget, I'm assuming, for board development. So part of it for us was how are we going to spend that money that meets the goals that we have for us as a board member? I think one time we wanted to, one year, our, our goal was just understanding, everybody had a different vocabulary and level understanding when it came to equity. And so for us, one year, we really wanted to center around that and have training for board members. And then we even had a book reading. We all read the same book together. So that was something that we did as a board. So those are, they're, it's a speci, it's like a SMART goal. Specific, measurable, it's timely, you know, we have to do it within the year. And so that, those are some examples of what we did. And we kind of put it against, you know, these things. Does it, is this a goal that the majority of the board is on, is on board? Then we can all buy into it. Is it connected to a strategic plan? If all of our board members have a better understanding of equity, yes, that's connected to a strategic plan. So there's ways that you can answer those questions. So as you think about this for August and you start kind of thinking about as a team, as a board collectively, what, what can we achieve in, what is it, nine, 10 months together? And that we can come back and then we're going to grade ourselves if we did, we did it or not, right? And how well we did it.
As we start, as we were listening to, not only you affirm what was up here, but also the things that you came up with, it feels like the, the themes for that criteria comes into like five different categories. So alignment is, is the goal that you said. Would it be aligned with Beaverton School District work? With the strategic plan? What, does it align with the values that the district and the board has around equity? Resources management, can you afford to do it? And it, or how do you impact the number of resources that are available? Is it measurable? And then who's responsible for it? And what we would do is we would take those themes and we'll come back and Eric has been working on a, like a flow chart that it, it's essentially a filter for any goals that you would discuss. And you start applying that filter and make sure that it fits as many of those as possible. Keep in mind, the filter has to be loose enough so that some goals make it through. It can't be that tight. But at the same, with, by the same token, you've got to make sure that it does meet the themes of the criteria that you've talked about. So our next steps will be to, actually, go ahead, one more. Yep. Our next steps will be to share this flow chart with you and we'll get that back to Carrie. And then she can bring that forward to you to consider, maybe put in your, in your updates to think about, put in your board materials. And then as you think about those, you can, you have time to refine them between now and your August retreat so that by the time you get to the retreat, you're very familiar with this criteria, you're, you feel good about it and you're ready to put your goals into place. One of the reasons we're so big on getting this criteria established ahead of time is that oftentimes, boards will, they'll lose a couple of months because they haven't started this process. So August comes around and it's the first time you've thought about goals. And it's no fault of anybody, everyone's busy. But if you're just starting to think about your goals in August, then it's September when you're talking about it the next time. And maybe you have your first draft in October and then maybe it's your November meeting where they're adopted. And by then, you're well into the school year. And specifically for next year, by then, you're two months away from the long session that's going to be happening. So that would be our next steps. We provide a tool for you that you start to take a look at and you start to edit and get it where you want it to be by the August retreat. And then you'll be off and running with being able to set some goals in August.
Thank you. And when we talk about some goals, we're talking two, three goals total, not like 15. Because it's something that we can actually accomplish.
And, yeah, we had a, three goals. It was.
It was kind of the limit we, we worked towards.
Well, thank you so much. Really appreciate your time and the work.
All right. Have a great rest of the day. Thank you.
We are, continue with our instruction. Our curriculum adoption process with Dr. Cordy and our team. Just checking in if people need a, a minute? Or do you, can we continue? Are you okay going? Keep going? Okay. Okay, great. So we'll hand over to our curriculum instruction team and Dr. Cordy.
Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon.
Thank you for having us. So the next, the next two topics will be teams from the Teaching and Learning Department. So, uh, the next, the next two topics will be teams from the Teaching and Learning Department. And the first topic that we want to visit with you about is, um, all about instructional materials adoptions and curriculum content standards. Um, and the second topic and, and the next team will be about student discipline and, um, data and, and even more, even equally important there, um, the processes and supports that we have in place um, leading up to, to, to those events. So first of all, instructional material adoptions. Um, first, I would like to introduce Veronica Galvane, who is a Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Administrator in Teaching and Learning, and Dr. Josh Fritz, who is an executive administrator also in the TNL department. In our conversation on this topic this afternoon, we will be, um, covering, um, discussing and then answering your questions on, um, topics including ODE's role in our curriculum adoption and what that looks like. Um, from, you know, the, the Oregon Department's role in those processes with all 197 districts across the state. Um, we'll talk also about content and grade level standards and what those mean to us as we go through the adoption process, and then what that looks like in the classroom, um, where the most important work, um, happens in our district every day. Um, we'll be sharing with you the approved, um, and approved by ODE, um, BSD adoption schedule. So that's part, part of the packet as well. And also, um, our amended adoption cycle and process. And, um, Dr. Baldarris referred to that, um, a couple nights ago uh, in our board meeting in his mid-year, um, update, um, on the, on the work being done. One of the pieces that I do before, um, before I turn it over to Ms. Galvane, I, I do want to also say, there's another element that's related to this body of work um, that we are still working on and figuring out how to put in place. And that's a district-level, um, curriculum committee um, that will also include, um, the board members that have been identified, you know, to be a part of that. That is a, that's a structure that, that we have not had in place before. We are learning from other districts that have a model like that, um, what that looks like. And so just wanted to say, we are, we're working diligently on that. Um, and, um, if you wonder why that's not a part of this conversation, it's, um, we, we still have information to gather and then recommendations to make to Superintendent Baldarris. So with that, um, Ms. Galvane, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, can y'all hear me? There we go. So districts are required to adopt and provide, uh, what's called free and appropriate materials. The, the state establishes an adoption cycle for, um, selecting this material. There's some criteria that, um, that needs to be met. For example, uh, the material needs to meet, uh, national material accessibility standards, and that's for students who are visually impaired or have another impairment where they can't access print. And there has to be community and parent involvement in the process. In addition, uh, they, uh, the, the states cause this material, um, let me, high-quality instructional material. Um, that means that it has to be at grade level, um, and aligned to grade level standards. It has to be culturally responsive, uh, reflect evidence-based practices, and, uh, includes, and include inclusive practices, support as, in form of PD for teachers. Uh, and it, it has to be, there has to be embedded assessments. And, um, make sure that it's, um, honoring, uh, all the diverse learners and, and educators. In addition, um, it must meet certain criteria that, this criteria is set by the state. Uh, the state conducts its own evaluation of publishers or materials that are out there. And then they publish their results, and you can find that in the ODE website. Any material that the district adopts must adhere to that state criteria. Grade level standards, um, or targets, and sometimes people use them interchangeably. That's really the curriculum. Sometimes we'll call, uh, curriculum the materials we adopt, but the curriculum is set by the state, and that's the grade level, that's the standard to learning targets. Districts and teachers must teach from the adopted material to ensure that we are aligning to those standards or meeting those standards. Teachers do not choose what they teach. This is chosen by the state, um, and, and that's how that process works.
There are nine content areas, I'm not going to read those to you, but you can see those all listed there. Um, and again, the Oregon Department of Education establishes the learning standards and targets for each of these content areas and at each grade level. Then it's the requirement of districts to go through the adoption process, um, which is roughly about every seven years for each content area. And districts are charged with selecting the instructional materials. Oftentimes, we use the words curriculum adoption, but it's really instructional materials that the state refers to. Districts are required to select those from the State Board of Education list. So you can go on the ODE website, and they've already vetted, say, for English Language Arts, a number of materials that they deem meet the requirements that have already been laid out here. If a district chooses to not select from those state board-approved, um, materials, then we would go through a separate process called an, an, an independent adoption process. And there are additional standards to that. And really what that's about is if there was no curriculum out there that actually fulfilled all the requirements of the learning targets. You all have seen this before, but just as a reminder, um, so as a district, this is our timeline. This is slightly different than the Oregon Department of Education's timeline. We at some point got off, off kilter a little bit. And so in order to catch us up and make sure that we are following the ODE timeline for adoptions by the fall of 2028, this is the timeline that is set in place. So this year, as you all know, we're looking at, um, an adoption cycle related to our Language Arts and English Language Proficiency at elementary school. Next year, we will do that same process for sixth through 12th grades at Language Arts and English Language Proficiency. The following year, um, for implementation by the fall of 2026, it's Math and Sciences. Uh, fall of 2027, implementation of Social Science, Health, Physical Education. And then lastly, the fall, implementing by the fall of 2028, Arts and World Languages. And you may remember, we already just recently went through an adoption process, for instance, with World Languages last year. But ODE establishes this to get us on track with their cycle. I saw a hand.
So just a reminder to the board as well as, uh, the community that the elementary adopts at a, so, it, it's a constant adoption for our elementary teachers compared to our secondary teachers at our content. So we have to be, I, I think this is a really, by the states, are really aggressive. And it's, it causes a lot of, uh, strain on our elementary school teachers when you adopt every year because they teach every subject. So just want to make sure the board...
That's right. That's a really important point, is if you are an elementary teacher, you are teaching essentially all nine of these areas. Maybe not World Languages, but you're responsible to teach all of these. Which means, even though it's a seven-year cycle, there is always something new that you have to be able to learn and implement in your classroom, which is very different than, say, being a, a secondary math teacher where your curriculum only changes every seven years. Good point.
And just, just to follow up there, as an elementary teacher, going through an adoption and then learning that, learning those materials and really being, becoming competent in what that looks like and sounds like in the classroom, and then having another adoption just come right on the heels of that is, um, is pretty poignant. And, um, I, I would just put an exclamation point behind the, the comments already made.
And also think about the financial cost. I mean, it's, it's the cost to teachers, but then we have to get new materials and put that in our budget to ensure that our students... And then thinking about dual-language programs or any other languages that we have so that the materials are, um, high-quality for all the different languages that we're teaching. So it's complex, um, and those processes are parallel, right? Um, for the adoptions for dual-language programs and for our English programs.
Yes, and for example, right now, um, the, the team leading the, the Language Arts, um, adoption process is involved in leading that is Toshiko and also Veronica, along with Robin. And so it is, it is that, that view of what is that going to look like um, for English Language Proficient, proficient, um, students, um, in that same conversation and not happening in a removed way.
All right. What I have up here is board policy, and I just, I think it's important to point out that, um, it, the board policy is very similar. You're going to see this across districts. Oftentimes, the language comes from the Oregon School Boards Association. Um, essentially what this says here is that the board approves adoptions, and the board authorizes the superintendent to develop and implement how selections are, um, determined. The procedures must involve opportunities for administrators, staff, uh, parents, students, and the community involvement. And essentially in Beaverton here, what that is, is that rests with, the responsibility rests with Teaching and Learning under the direction of the Deputy Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. Where you see differences in that is regardless of, of district size or those sorts of things, you might see this a little bit different in, in some districts. Although what you see up here, this is our process that we have put in place here in Beaverton. I know it's really small font, you can go to the website and see it, it's much bigger font there. Um, this is an annual cycle. So again, we are constantly re-going through this cycle. This year, it's with the Elementary, uh, Language Arts and English Language Proficiency. We'll no sooner finish this out in the spring, and we will start again with the 612 English Language Arts and English Language Proficiency. So it's kind of the never-ending cycle. Um, what you see up here is this is something that starts in the spring. So one of the first steps is really involving, um, folks to get committee members to begin looking at this, starting over the summer to really delve into what's the research say? What do we know that we need for our students? We always look at student data, um, input from the community, teachers, all of that. Um, and then we start to go through a process, looking at the ODE vetting process so we understand what those requirements are, as well as looking at what curriculum we currently have. So we don't want to just assume whatever we have isn't working. We want to look at how well it is working. And then look at that state board-adopted list of approved curriculum um, to make sure that we're really being thoughtful about that process. And then if we needed to, we could go to the independent adoption process. There are opportunities in here in this timeline that talk about community engagement, classroom pilots, um, opportunities for our community to give feedback, both our staff, uh, students, but also parents and other community members, before making any recommendation to you as board members. So that recommendation would come in the late spring. The reason for that then is we want to make sure, once we have an adoption approved, we then need to be able to work with the vendor to purchase the materials. And we want to have materials here and onboard when teachers come back in August. Because then that's when we're doing that implementation training and getting the curriculum rolled out. So it's a really tight timeline. Um, but it is important that we stay on an annual cycle like this so that we don't continue to have that fallback where we haven't quite wrapped up one process and we've now had to move into a year with another process. The other piece that I would just highlight that you may not get from looking at this slide here is that as a district, we have really moved in recent years to having more folks around the table. And what I mean by that, Dr. Cordy already referenced, having some of our dual-language programs at the, the table. But we also have special education represented. Um, we have a wide variety of voices. So it's not, um, like years ago, um, where there was kind of a core adoption, and then there might be a side adoption for intervention or dual-language or whatever that other area was. We want to make sure that we are really holistically looking at whatever curriculum materials or instructional materials, um, that we might consider adopting. The other thing that I would just lastly leave you with is, this is also always an evolving process. So at the spring, when we get through the process, then we look back and we say, is there anything that we need to tighten up or think about doing better? Because we want to continuously focus on improvement rather than just cranking out instructional materials adoptions.
And we would love to just take any questions that you have and have a conversation, uh, on this topic.
So we have about 15 minutes for this conversation and, um, see if we need more. But comments, questions, and Melissa, Tammy? Oh, Melissa?
Uh, thank you for the presentation, and, uh, I appreciate that idea of the curriculum needs to meet the needs of all of our students. So we need to have a broader range of adults who are engaged in the educational process. Um, one of the things that I, we've seen in the strategic plan is that, um, the MTSS, like the, the... Is there somebody at the table to see how the curriculum fits in with all of that as well? Or is that just you all?
That, that really is all of us together. Um, but when we talk about MTSS, when we're talking about doing an instructional materials adoption, that's the core adoption. And that's why we need to look at student data and make sure we're meeting the needs of the majority of our students. We always understand there may be students that need extensions or interventions. But that's really at the heart of a, a solid MTSS system is having a core curriculum that is research-based and meeting the needs of the majority of students.
Uh, Sunita?
Thank you very much. My question is, you ma, you mentioned that teachers do not decide what they're going to teach in the classrooms. It's the state standards that they have to follow. So we have many elementary schools or middle schools. If I go into one middle school or elementary school, will I see the same material being taught in another school, too? Is there, like, is there, like, we used, how is that done? Is the content different to attain the same thing? No.
It should be the same every, whether it, seventh grader in a social studies class across the district, their, teachers are teaching to the same, uh, standards and learning targets. It could vary by, you know, when they're teaching them, by time, but they all...
And they don't have textbooks, right? They don't have...
They, they have textbooks, um, but they have, there, a lot of stuff right now is online, and they do, they do have it, uh, in that format. Uh, but again, they're, they're teaching to the standards, and the way they, they meet those is there's the, there's the adoption that we have, and teachers can find supplemental material, but it still has to align to the standards.
And that's the art of teaching. And that's the art of teaching.
Right.
Because we have state standards, we're required to teach. We have curriculum that we adopt and purchase through taxpayer dollars to meet those needs, but teachers always augment.
They can have addition, but they use the same materials that is bought.
Well, we have the adopted materials.
Yeah.
And it's, but they can supplement that and augment that with whatever they find. That's, that's the art of teaching, and, and that's why you'll see some differences, because people augment their teaching.
Yeah. But most of the schools will have the same adopted materials.
Yes.
They all should have, yes, they all will.
That's accurate.
They will have the same.
Yes.
So I remember housing the stuff in my classroom. So you would have like, even though I, I wasn't teaching the English side, they still bought for all of us at that point. Like, we had, we have them, every teacher should have the materials, um, to teach if they want to. Like, when we were, when I was teaching, if I wanted to add a, you know, uh, Mo Williams book instead of the book that they gave me, because I, I thought it connected to the children more, then I would read my book. Um, but it would still need to meet the standards.
And, and Director Garg, I, I would also say that, as, as Veronica described it, is, is absolutely correct. And we, we know that there are areas where we need to tighten that up. Um, you know, for example, in the Language Arts, um, English Language Proficiency adoption that is going on right now, the team sent out a survey to our educators to really get feedback, you know, on, on what is being used now and what does that look like? And, you know, that what, what we are learning is there are inconsistencies. And so that, that, that happens. Um, and when it, when it does, we've got to get our arms around that and, um, provide systems and support in the, by way of professional development, um, uh, that, that really helps shore that up.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just trying to understand, you know, how it is done, but thank you for your answer.
Ugana, and then Tammy?
Yeah, um, thank you so much for the presentation. And, um, my question is, um, I'm just trying to follow up on Sunita's question. So if I understood you correctly, you're saying that there is a standard curriculum for every student, but some teachers can augment, um, on that curriculum. Now, how much are they able to add? How much materials of their own are they able to add to the standard curriculum? Because what it sounded to me, it, it comes down to differences of educators. So it, it sounds to me, some educators would just go with the barest minimum of what is being provided, and some would go that extra mile to add more to that material. So how much are they able to add to what they already have? Is there like an oversight? So how much are they able to add to what they already have? Is there like an oversight on, on that? Just my curiosity.
Yeah, I think that actually goes back to what Dr. Cordy said about PD, and teachers feeling like they know how to use whatever materials we've adopted. I know one of the big, big feedbacks we're getting from even science a few years ago, but right now with language arts, is PD. As long as teachers feel like they, they know how to use whatever we've adopted, they will use it. It's when, it's when the training isn't there, or newer teachers maybe who haven't received that PD, that they start, like you said, supplementing. So I think part of a good adoption cycle is that PD piece. And it is, when new teachers come into the system, what are we doing to support them to make sure they know how to use the adopted material? Like Dr. Perez said, it's, it's always, you know, teachers, different teachers will bring in something that they feel is a little more relevant, or depending on the kids in front of them and the needs they, they have, they'll supplement. But it's always with the learning targets in mind. So it, it really is about professional development and supporting teachers, so they, they can use what we've adopted, and we're being very mindful about that as we go through this adoption cycle.
My second question is for Dr. Frits. You mentioned something about independent adoption process. Is this something that we have ever done before? In what situation do you deviate from the state process, and then do the independent adoption process?
Yes. Here in Beaverton, there's a history of using the independent adoption process. And I will say, for many years, the Department of Education didn't, in Oregon, this is not true in every state, but in Oregon, didn't publish a list of approved materials. So it was standard practice for many years in the state to actually go through an independent adoption process. And as an example that comes to mind in recent years is the social studies learning targets. There are a number of them that are very specific to our state. So if you think of Senate Bill 13 and some of that work, not many publishers are going to publish specifically instructional materials that address our local native populations. And so therefore, the district chose at that time to go through an independent adoption, and essentially have curriculum developed that would meet all of those learning targets. So that's, that's typically when you see it, is when a district goes out earlier because, before other publishers have published things that need to be addressed, or if there's something very specific that a district wants to see addressed in the materials. Otherwise, most districts do go through the process of using the state board-adopted materials. Part of that is, it's already been vetted, there's vendor showcases, there's a number of things that happened with that. And then oftentimes, we use supplemental materials to supplement whatever they feel like it may be missing.
Justice, and then Tammy? Tammy, and then Justice.
Thank you. The ODE require, one of the requirements for the materials is that they be culturally responsive. And I feel like those two words do a lot of heavy lifting. Wondering how you approach it. I don't bring the pedagogical background that some of my esteemed colleagues do, but I did come across the term, you know, that our materials should be both a window and a mirror. And, and what other things do you guys think about when you're looking at this material such that you feel like we are allowing kids to have both a window and a mirror?
And the only reason I, I can answer that relatively quickly is because we're going through an adoption cycle right now, and we had this discussion yesterday, actually. And it's about the books, it's about the text. It's not just talking about, you know, in a book, reading about someone else's culture, but actually, who are the authors? Who's writing the book? Who's the main character in the book? If you're thinking of science, are we studying and learning about scientists of color, women, making sure that students with disabilities see themselves in, in, in the text? So it's, it's that and so much more. What is the material getting at with the big topics, big ideas, big questions around empathy and, and cultural understanding of, of different, for, for kids? So that's, that's at the forefront of, of the committee, and yesterday was a wonderful example of that, when, when we, we vetted some publishers, and the committee was very strong that this was important to them.
Excellent. And again, it's, it's the people at the table that are making that decision and assessment. And so my hunch is that we have a very diverse group of people sitting at that table.
We do, we were very intentional about that. One of, heartwarming for me personally, was yesterday, again, during the adoption process, something happened where something was said, and, you know, sometimes it feels like it's always on, on people that look like me to say something, but it wasn't. It was people that looked like you, and they stood up, and that was, that was wonderful. So it's a really strong committee.
Justice?
Within the process, if, I guess it's a two-part question, maybe? One, if a curriculum that we've adopted, and it's maybe before we're getting to a place where it would be natural time to update that curriculum, but either, if there's some sort of state expectation change, right? Like, do we have provisions to adjust if the curriculum we have just doesn't meet that? Is that, is that a whole nother process, or is that just a picking up the things that the state says, oh, that wasn't a part of, say, the social studies curriculum, but now it is? Like, when the, the, like, the Native American community, indigenous community, like, education piece, that is that something? Like, do we have a timeline where we have to say what we have? Or, you know, how does that work? Just so, give me, and then I have a second point, but that's the first one.
Yeah, the, the way that works is when changes are made in Salem, then that is expectation that districts then in the next adoption cycle would address those things. So there's always a window of time, but ultimately, we have to follow, there was that slide where I had kind of what our timeline is. We report out as part of Division 22 annually, where we are in our cycle and that we're meeting it. So there is that opportunity, certainly if somehow we wanted to go to ODE and say, hey, can we tackle something sooner? We need to adjust this. Although, I don't know that I would recommend that, but we could certainly do that. The other direction, though, is if a change is made, then there's always a timeline that goes with that. That being said, there are occasionally bills that we'll put in place. It's not a full adoption. There might be a new course or some requirement, and then ODE, again, gives a timeline for implementation around that.
So just, want to clarify as well, is when budget times get very, very tough, it's, this is one of the areas that gets cut, because it's so expensive. And just to, in, in memory for, for me, when I was an executive in Hillsborough, I was in charge of science and math curriculum, and we didn't adopt, we hadn't adopted science curriculum for 17 years. So 17 years in Hills, in Hillsborough, because of budget constraints. So we're very, very fortunate here in Beaverton to have support in multiple ways. So we're being very aggressive on our continued adoption.
And then the second question I had was, like, how does, like, the literacy intervention work that we're doing this year, you know, as a part of it, does that, that doesn't require, like, does that type of activity require, doesn't require an immediate change to the curriculum, but it does require some action? So how does, how do those sort of emergency things, like, fit into? Is it similar to how you said, or is there anything else we should know?
Yeah. Typically, what, when we're talking about intervention, we're talking about supplemental tools, so we're not talking about the core curriculum adoption process. Although increasingly, when we think about MTSS, or that multi-tiered system of support, we want to be thinking about all of our students. So that is a conversation that comes up as we're adopting our core instructional materials. Are there intervention or acceleration materials that go with it? Does this fit with some of our other interventions that are going on?
What other questions? Well, thank you. Okay, Melissa?
Sorry. I like curriculum. So it, as teachers are, you mentioned online resources and paper resources, and I imagine some of our teachers are seeing the need to build community in different ways, and sometimes those paper resources help engage students collaboratively in a different way than that Chromebook interface does. Does teachers have options for all of our curriculum to pull back from the screen time to engage community in a different way, or how does that work?
Sorry, I have a little button problem there. So increasingly, what we're seeing is vendors are not producing hardbound books, which is also a budget impact, because you can't, it's no longer every seven years you buy a set of whatever the curriculum is. Increasingly, they are software purchases, and we have to buy a license annually. Sometimes they'll allow us to buy a three-year license. What we have done, because of that, we know that's an important piece, is there are many areas, I think about our AGS 1, 2, and 3 sequence.
What is AGS 1?
Yeah, thank you. Our Algebra, Geometry, and Statistics, so our math curriculum, that is an online piece. But what we have committed to doing as a district is that each summer, we actually have all of that printed off on paper, which doesn't sound very environmentally friendly, but we know that there are many, many students that do better, not just on a Chromebook, but they actually have paper and pencil in front of them. So we're having to make some decisions about not just purchasing curriculum or instructional materials, but then how can we turn that into paper, or, you know, hardcore kind of things that are in front of students, rather than just digitally? So it, it is kind of a, it ebbs and flows.
Thank you so much for your work. I know that, I was telling Dr. Valderras and Solita in a, in a leadership meeting yesterday, that in our training that we had for board members a couple of years ago, they said that the more time in a board meeting that we spend talking about instruction in kids like this, the stronger our kids will do, or the better our students will do, and the better our system. So I'm really excited that you were here today, and we're talking about instruction and what's happening in our classrooms. And thank you to our teachers. We know that the adopting of new materials takes a lot of time to learn the new materials and get comfortable with them. There's a higher lift, I would say, at elementary than secondary, because they have to, they teach all subjects and have to be expert in all those subjects. So thank you to our teachers. But, thank you. So, any other, anything else Heather before?
No, no, thank you. Thank you for having us, and we will shift gears to the next topic, if that works for you.
Perfect. Anybody need a break? Okay. We'll take a five-minute pause and be back at 4:07. The team can come up. Our board retreat, and right now, we're welcoming our, let's say, curriculum adoption, our Student Conduct and Discipline Data Team. And we'll have Dr. Cordy introduce everybody for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, and I'm doing that at 4:08.
Okay. Perfect. So Chair Perez, Superintendent Valderras, members of the board, we appreciate being able to be here with you this afternoon on this, this topic of student discipline. We, we are going to, our, the information that we have to share is, is sort of in two parts. It's about, the first part, the first half is about processes and supports, and then we'll have a time for Q and A after the process piece, and then we'll shift gears, so to speak, and go into the, the data, and then Q and A around that. And of course, always interject at, at any point, but just wanted you to know that that's sort of the, the design of how, how we approach this. We will be, will be presenting an overview of the discipline processes for BSD. We'll be sharing information related to restorative practices, and collaborative alternative solutions to exclusion. And that is, the acronym that you will hear about there is CASE, and we'll talk more about that as the presentation and the conversation goes on. And then we will be looking at and reviewing K-12 discipline data from the first semester of the school year. Additionally, and as a reminder, a few weeks ago, we heard a program update from our Behavioral Health and Wellness Team, and so that was Patrick Meggs and two of our amazing TOSs, or teachers on special assignment, and really talked about the work and the focus of those teams. And just, just as a reminder, that, that whole body of And just, just as a reminder, that, that whole body of work is key in this conversation that we're having this afternoon as well. And the support pieces and the wraparound services and supports of students through the BH&amp;W process. Because we had that opportunity to engage in that conversation with you in a program update a few weeks ago, that's not going to be an active part of our conversation here, but we would be remiss not to just give, give a little reminder about that and that important piece of the conversation. In, in our district, we continue to support students and family and staff in Tier One, Two, and Three interventions related to social-emotional learning and positive student behaviors. And every school has a school improvement plan. This year, we have, we have taken very significant steps as a result of the strategic plan for which we are very thankful to, to help ensure that our school improvement plans are aligned to this strategic plan. One very clear and evident way that those connections are happening is that every school improvement plan, as you well know by now, has a safe and thriving goal, which is all about social-emotional learning. And again, that's important in this conversation because that's part of, of the supports that happen before we ever get to the point of even considering an exclusionary practice, for example. This afternoon, we have, as you can see, a fabulous team presenting and sharing with you and answering questions. So Todd Corsetti, he is our Executive Administrator for High Schools and Option Programs. Pat McCreery is one of the two administrators for the Office of Equity and Inclusion. And then we've got Robin Kabrowski, who is a K-8 Executive Administrator. Next to her, Josh Fritz, who is also an Executive Administrator in Teaching and Learning, and Baovang, who is also a K-8 Executive Administrator. So when we were thinking about how to approach this conversation, we wanted to make sure to have representation from the three levels, also to help really be able to relay and answer questions from potentially a sped lens. In addition to really reiterating, as we've said so many times, all of the work that we do, the equity lens is, is literally always in front of our team on a table tent. I mean, that is in every one of our meetings and, and all of our conversations. And we're so thankful to have Pat and Tatiana as the administrators leading that work. And just a reminder, it's all of our responsibilities to, to lean into those questions and the elements of that equity lens as we're making decisions. We wanted to make sure to include that in our conversation this afternoon. So you can see the, the four questions that comprise our equity lens on the slide in front of you. We could just take a moment and you can just read those silently. Okay. And then we will go on to, again, here's just an overview of our conversation this afternoon, the elements that we will be addressing. Several of those, if not all of them, I have referenced already. And again, just a reminder, we'll take, we'll take a pause on process questions before we get to the data summary piece. With that, I will turn the presentation over to Todd Corsetti.
Thank you, Dr. Cordy, and good afternoon, everyone. I think it's, it's good that we started at 3:30 talking about content and curriculum and assessment, because as important as that is in the classroom, it's equally important to talk about how do we teach behaviors? And how do we teach the social and emotional well-being of our students and the safety of our students? And so Heather already touched on this, but our, one of our district goals and the one that all of our schools possess is around safe and thriving. And so I don't want to talk too much more about that other than to say that the outcomes are what drives our decisions and drives our student discipline processes and procedures as well, which is that students need to feel safe, students need to thrive socially and emotionally, and that students need to feel valued and included. We need this to be a focus on the outcomes of student behaviors in order to create, and hopefully create, young adults who are able to thrive in a democracy. That's one of the jobs of us as educators, is what do our kids look like? Not just when they're 18, when they leave our system, but when they're 25 and when they're 35? Are they critical thinkers? And do they understand how to deal with conflict? And how, how accountability falls in line with expectations and behaviors? It's part of our job. So we spend time just theoretically talking about what are our foundational practices when it comes to student discipline? Namely, it has to be student-centered. We want to be proactive. We want to teach expectations. Some of you who've been around in education may remember PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. That's, we want to teach what we expect of our students. We want to know the whole student. We know when students come to us, they come with varied experiences, they come with varied support. We need to understand all of that when we're working with our student population. You're going to hear this often, but relationships are key. It is so important that our staff have relationships with kids, that they build that trust. Context matters. There's, there's a phrase called the ABCs of behavior. And what that stands for is we need to know what the antecedent to the B behavior is to have a C consequence that matches that. So every situation guided by the Student Code of Conduct, also, we need to understand the context in which those things occur. And as part of our foundational practices, our hope is that exclusion is not our first response. Our first response is non-exclusion. It's understanding the situation. And exclusion is only one of the last things we apply when it comes to student discipline. So how do we do this? What are the proactive approaches that we take as a system? One is that each year, we're in the midst of this right now, we, we will review the Student Code of Conduct. We have input from all stakeholders in the district. All administrators have the opportunity to give input into the Code of Conduct. Each year, every school creates and/or revises and updates the school's success plans with staff. So they go through, what does behavior management look like in our school? What does it look like when students are sent to the office or there's a referral? What is our processes of school? We spend time, as we're doing today, talking about data, talking about collectively in our administrative teams, whether it's vice principal, job-specific, all admin, looking at, at the data for discipline to make sure we recognize where the bubbles are and what interventions we need to take place. Heather already talked about equity. I already talked about the ABCs of, of behavior and what we look for. Another key piece this year has been our equity modules as we work with all staff around understanding and applying the equity lens in their interactions with each other, and most importantly, with, with our kids in our community. We have structures and systems to teach PBIS, Level One, our-
Can you say what PBIS is, please?
Positive Behavior Intervention Support. And so basically, it was something that happened 20 years ago, and it's morphed into the tiered MTSS that we currently have. You've got the green level students, yellow level students, and red level. And so we teach to the green, and we create character-strong lessons and support for students to understand what's expected of them. And then there's positive behavior supports. When you, when you show that you're doing the right thing, you get supported for that, too. And Dr. Cordy already talked about the presentation last month about BH&amp;W, and that's a key piece to this, is how do we make sure that counselors and other administrators who are talking about kids are looking at data and seeing what trends are occurring with our student population? So then, how do we intervene? What are the things we do when we have to intervene? And that's part of the job as, as educators, is there are times when students make decisions that we need to intervene upon. And what we always try to apply is a leveled approach, and that's based on the Student Code of Conduct. So we'll talk a little bit more about that specifically. But we make sure that we follow the Student Code of Conduct. We know the context, the ABCs of behavior, what's happening, what's the antecedent, what's the behavior, and does the consequence match that? We really want to focus on restoring relationships and a return to learning. So there are times when there might need to be restorative conversations that need to take place. How do we get the student back in the classroom? How do we get the student back interacting with the content in the curriculum? And as I said before, exclusion is a last resort. And really key to all of this is that parents and families are critical partners. That communication strand is vital, that parents understand what's happening with their students and can help support the school, and the school can help support parents in the same way. So as we move into sort of how do we respond? One of the keys to that is restorative practices. And so what are the skills and techniques that we work with our staff on in terms of interrupting student behaviors, but also getting to the core of what's happening in that student's life? And so I'm going to let Pat McCreery from Office of Equity and Inclusion talk a little bit about restorative practices and how they're applied in, in cases of student behaviors.
Thank you, Todd, and good evening, board. It's nice to be with you again. I'm excited to share with you what we've been doing with restorative practices. The restorative practices are really grounded in two key concepts, relationships and community. And the development of strong relationships in order to create a community where when conflict occurs, we have tools that allow us to restore relationships rather than result in things like exclusion that erode relationships. Go ahead and move forward if you would, Todd. A little bit of history of restorative practices in Beaverton School District. It started officially in about 2016 in the Office of Equity and Inclusion as the office supported the training of trainers, and that happened to be through the International Institute of Restorative Practices. I share that because there's different organizations that engage in restorative practices training. Ours is through what's known as the IIRP. That's where we began the Train the Trainer effort. We've since expanded a bit. Between 2018 and 2020, we started offering trainings in three core areas. We do have books available in our OEI library, if you'd like, but we have the introduction, the circles, and the conferencing trainings that we've offered. Those were offered to groups of administrators in 2019 and 20, to our Behavioral Health and Wellness Program staff in 2020 and '21. And then since then, we've been offering trainings both virtually in response to remote learning, and then also in-person formats in an effort to build capacity at the administrative, the staff, and the district level. Restorative practices, as you've heard talked about as part of our Behavioral Health and Wellness Program, really grounded in proactive preventative measures. And so if you were to go into a school to look for restorative practices, you, you wouldn't necessarily see it. You might hear it in the interactions between a teacher and a student. You might hear it in language that's intended to build and then sustain a relationship. You might hear it in questioning, when conflicts do arise, how do adults engage in questioning to help resolve the conflict? Then there's more formal structures. You will see perhaps classrooms situated in circles, but also more than just the shape of the, the furniture organization. It's really about what that does to create a community in the space. And then ultimately, about 20% of restorative practices is what we call the responsive piece. And that's where you might see an official restorative conference protocol. Those are the things that are often offered as an alternative to more traditional forms of discipline. But, but I want to make sure you understand that's 20% of what our efforts go towards. Most of it is that Tier One-level practices that enhance the classroom and the relationships. One of the things that we use a lot is the restorative questions. And these, these are the official restorative questions as developed by the International Institute. These are questions that literally we put on cards so that people can put in their badges so that when we are in a moment where there might be conflict between others or between ourselves and others, we can engage in those. I also get to be the presenter who comes with gifts. If anybody would like them, we have some cards for you that we can offer later. We really try to coach people in using these questions. And I can just attest, in the past couple of weeks, I've actually been able to use these questions in a very natural setting as I'm working with colleagues to help address and potentially resolve conflicts. We find that when we use these questions specifically and we don't stray from them, we create a pattern of restoring relationships that, that really works. And they're both questions for the challenging behavior, as we're calling it, and those harmed by the challenging behavior. These are also questions that we're using as part and parcel of our policy ACB, Every Student Belongs Bias Incident Reporting Tool. So most of the response, unless it's an egregious violation or an egregious bias incident, most of it, we're, we're encouraging people to engage in restorative questioning as a restorative response to that. And the final piece I want to share with you is the framework that we use throughout our restorative efforts. It's called the Social Discipline Window. I could talk at you a lot about this, but what I essentially want to convey is that the core of restorative practices is that it encourages us to do with students and community, not to, for, or without. And so it's really a guiding principle of how we engage in the work. Therefore, when we, when we're looking at discipline, it's that we're doing discipline with the students and families, not to them, not for them, and not neglecting them. Thank you. I'm going to pass it over to, I think, Robin.
Nope.
Nope, I'm going to pass it back to Todd.
So thanks, Pat. And Pat talked about one of our intervention strategies, which is restorative practices. Another one is our CASE. And CASE stands for Collaborative Alternative Solutions to Exclusion. And it's a fairly new advent in the Beaverton School District. I, I believe it started over the pandemic, and then sort of ramped up after kids returned to school in '21, '22. And CASE is a rotating group of educators, thanks, Pat, led by Jessica Pierce, who leads our Project Reset, which we'll talk more about, but Project Reset is where kids go when they do get expelled. But there's a committed group of counselors, administrators, social workers, who, when there's a situation that arises in, that a school brings to the table that says, "We have a challenging student behavior that's occurring. We need additional help. We see that this kid is struggling. It's potentially going to lead to suspension, or maybe it has led to suspension, but it may be leading to further suspensions. Help." And what CASE does is it, it comes together and it starts talking about what resources are available in the community that can help support the student and the family. And they really take a whole-child approach, and they work with the school to say, "Here are some recommendations. Have you tried this? Have you tried this?" And it's, I think it's important to actually read the mission of CASE to help explain it. CASE is to be equity-focused and anti-racist in disrupting systemic and implicit bias that leads to the exclusion of students from education based on students' identity markers, to collaborate with colleagues to determine root causes that lead to exclusionary discipline, and to find best practices to support students in feeling safe and thriving, and to reduce all non-state mandated expulsions with the ultimate goal of eliminating them. None of us want to exclude kids from school. And so the goal of CASE is to help avoid that by giving tools for our educators to support students in their behaviors. As part of that, it, it, it creates short and middle and long-term framework of goals for the student. And oftentimes, CASE will meet once about a student. They'll implement those goals in that framework. They'll talk to families. They'll be strength-based to try to make sure that they're just focused on what are the students bringing to the table? And what could we maybe leverage as opportunities for their behavior to change? We've seen a great deal of success with CASE in reducing many of our suspensions, and in particular, reducing our expulsions, which we can talk a little bit more about. So next, Robin Kabrowski is going to talk about the Student Code of Conduct and how that helps guide our work.
Good evening. So the Student Code of Conduct is a resource that outlines expectations, responsibilities, rights of all members of our school community. The intent of the handbook is really partnership between family, students, and school. And therefore, it's something we actually ask all families to review at the start of every school year. The handbook is an important resource because it, it supports the work that we're doing every day with students, and therefore, in the, in the schools, it's something that we use daily, and it guides us. So it's a really critical tool for, for the work of all educators. It's also a resource that we're reviewing annually in our school district, so we make updates on a consistent basis. This, this tool is something that administrators specifically use when we're evaluating and intervening on student behavior. It provides specific guidance to the levels of intervention that we're doing with students, and it guides our disciplinary response as a result. Administrators use this as they study the ABCs of behavior, as Todd spoke of. And in, in organization, there are 38 conduct offenses that are outlined in the handbook, and four levels of, of intervention, and then disciplinary response. Two terms that I think are important that we address specifically are suspension and expulsion. Suspension may be in-school or out-of-school, and that's an important distinction. An in-school suspension- An in-school suspension allows the student to remain in school, but the student is removed from the classroom setting. But it does allow them to continue their education in some capacity. An out-of-school suspension, the student is removed from the school setting. And those can be, suspensions can be up to 10 days. An expulsion actually terminates the right of a student to attend school for a substantial period, but not to extend one calendar year.
Okay. All right. And within that, when we're looking at guidance around secondary suspension and expulsion, we have really worked hard to build in additional supports around drug and alcohol guidance, particularly our substance use specialists. In fact, this year, we added two additional substance use specialists using student investment account funds at the middle school. Previously, we only had substance use specialists that were able to support students at the high school. So again, we're really trying to take that look at, how do we support students and get them the support that they need to be successful, rather than take everything as a disciplinary infraction? As you see up there, only would we move towards an expulsion at the fourth or fifth offense. So really, we're trying to work with the student, have the student and family work with a substance use specialist or an outside provider to address what's going on with the student before we would move towards an expulsion. The exception to that is distribution because that's state-mandated. Along those lines, we've already heard some about the CASE consult process, but we're really trying to embed that in sooner rather than later, so that we're focusing on what supports does the student need to be successful. That really positive approach to building the student up and building in the supports that will help them to find success, rather than continued struggles with whatever may be going on with them. And again, expulsion is used only as a last resort, in the shortest term possible. Gone are the days of, "It used to be, and when I started in education, you got expelled. It was for a full 365 days." That is not what we're talking about here. There are times certainly when a student may be removed from the learning environment, but we would never be looking at that kind of length of time. And we're looking at interim placements and other ways for them to continue their education and continue their learning, and ways to get them back engaged with their school as early as possible. That includes having the home school, continuing a relationship with the students. It used to be the student, if they were removed from the school setting, that relationship ended, and it made it very difficult for a student to re-enter and regain access. Another piece of this is really continued professional development and guidance. And so we've already heard about the equity modules, but this is just a list here of all the different things that are happening across the district to ensure that all of our administrators, all of our teachers, all of our staff are continuing to really develop their understanding of restorative practices and how we can best meet our students' needs from a lens of, we want to support and help them to find success rather than discipline.
Okay, thank you. And we are at the point where we have concluded the process and supports piece and would love to open it up to questions on that portion.
Questions? Ugana, it sounds like, maybe we'll go around. It sounds like people have. Do you want to start, Ugana?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I see the, for lack of a better word, I see the palm prints of our strategic plan embedded in the presentation, so thank you very much. My first question is to Dr. Cuddy. You mentioned there were some upgrades to the BH&amp;W program. Was that part of the presentation tonight?
Thank you for that. The BH&amp;W update, program update, happened, I believe, at the board meeting last month. And so that was woven into that agenda, and that's what I was referencing. And so that was that program update. And I know we like to feature one department or program each month at the board meeting. And aside from that, what is happening in that work is really revisiting what those structures look like and working to ensure that there is consistency from school to school around those supports.
Sounds good, thank you. And then my second question would be around the restorative practices, the trainings. Are they mandatory for all educators?
Great question. They're not mandatory. They haven't been. They've been sort of offered optionally, and that's part of the way that the program was grown. It really, coming out of our office, it was offered first with a core of four trainers who were trained, and they worked specifically with those targeted audiences. So when I mentioned the administrative group, the Behavioral Health and Wellness staff, what we did was looked at where would be the best impact for training. And then we did that while also offering and encouraging voluntary training that folks could do. So a lot of times, we saw members of building staff, including student managers, including campus supervisors, coming in coordinated efforts. One year, because there had been a significant change in the assistant principal population, at the secondary level, there was a concerted effort to get new assistant principals trained in there. So we didn't, it wasn't mandatory largely because of capacity. We didn't have the capacity to offer required training to everybody, but it was strongly encouraged within certain communities, and then certain communities were targeted so that everybody could get that.
Sorry, clarifying on that one. Our administrators were not required to get restorative practice training, or they were?
They have been at certain times, not recently.
Okay. So at a certain point, some of the, all administrators were given restorative practice, but with the changes in people.
Right.
Some of them may not have that training.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Justice, do you have? We can pass and come back to. I was just going to go and like, let everybody.
Thank you. A quick follow-up to Ugana's question. Is the restorative practice training offered to our classified staff at this point?
It is.
Okay, great. And then thinking about, like, let's say there's a fight or physical altercation, and we do all of this restorative work inside the school, and we've got the parties sitting down, and we really feel like we got to a good resolution, and then the kids go home. And now their parents are upset. So I'm wondering if there is in place, or we could think about a way to bring the families in before the family, the kid gets home, the family gets angry, calls the cops, and now we've got a kid tangled up in the justice system. So is there a current practice of bringing families in before tensions can get really high, or any intention to do that? Because I've certainly heard that, you know, this has happened in our district, and I'd love to see, you know, and maybe it's unavoidable, but maybe we could, there's more intentionality that we could put into this that could avoid that.
Sure. So the family component, in terms of the practices of restorative practices, the family is often involved in that protocol I mentioned, the restorative conferencing. Restorative conferencing is highly structured, so it's not something we engage in lightly. It takes time, it takes planning. Both parties have to want to do it. It's not something that can be effective if someone is forced to do it. With that, families are often involved because they are part of the support for each of the parties, the party harmed and the party that had the challenging behavior. What you're speaking to also taps into, and I don't want to stray from our topic, but taps into the work that Dr. Savios and I are doing in the Office of Equity and Inclusion around family engagement, working with buildings. Because that family engagement as a preventative piece is absolutely part of that. And I would say, just as I was talking about, restorative practices that happen at that tier-one level, they're just part of how we build community in a classroom. That's also done with the school and with the district and the community at large. So those efforts are underway in a different context than what we're presenting tonight, but absolutely part and parcel of the work.
Melissa?
I had a quick question about the PBIS transition to MTSS. What were the shortcomings of the PBIS that, because it sounds like it's an improvement to have the MTSS? So, and along those lines, two parts, right now, some of our instructional practices, instead of being a triangle, we're more like a pillar. And it sounds like getting people to do more restorative practices in their classroom, we're trying to get it back to a triangle. So what supports do teachers have who might be stuck in a pillar situation to get them back into a triangle? Does that question make sense? Okay.
I think I heard two questions.
I did, sorry, I snuck in too.
And then we can move on to the support piece. So the history around PBIS, it is, it's over 20 years old. This makes me feel old when I say this now. And probably you know that came out of the University of Oregon. It was specific to behavior. At the same time, there was research work being done around academic interventions. So you probably have heard RTI, that was some language. That was specific to academics. What makes MTSS, or multi-tiered systems of support, unique is it takes the whole child into account. You can't just address academics and not address behavior. Likewise, you can't just address behavior and not academics. So the idea behind MTSS is we bring both the world of PBIS, to use some of that language, and RTI, response to intervention, the academics, and we bring it together and we look at the whole child. And each child individually may need different amounts of support on the academic side or on the behavior, social, emotional side. So that's really some of that language and how that all comes together, and why we, as a district, want to be thoughtful about the whole child and using a multi-tiered systems as a support approach. In fact, when you see that triangle, an MTSS triangle, oftentimes, there's a dotted line down the middle, and there's MTSSA for academics and MTSSB for behavior and social, emotional. So that's what we're talking here. In answer to your second question, because again, I think what I heard was, what kind of supports are there? It is continued learning for teachers and continued professional development around, what do the core look like when we're talking about curriculum? So whether that's curriculum related to SEL, social, emotional learning, or related to reading, what does that core look like? How do we implement that evidence-based, research-based learning for students? And then what does it look like to provide interventions? Because again, if you think about an elementary teacher and all of those content areas, and then to think you're going to be able to differentiate and come up with all these interventions, it's an ongoing professional learning opportunity. But the benefit we have here is we have such rich behavioral health and wellness teams that can support with, what are those interventions or tiered levels of support look like for students that need additional interventions?
Sunita, any questions? Okay, we have about a half hour left, and so I don't, we'll take one more look at questions and then we go into the discipline part so that there's some time to discuss that part too. So any, one last justice you haven't, okay.
Maybe a comment more than a question, or just a thought. So listening to this, in my own experience with restorative justice, especially within the context of like the juvenile justice system, and then also, and then the other side of this in relationship to like classroom management strategy, right? So my, I guess, question is with the, this is the first time I've been presented CASE in terms of that, so I didn't know we had it explicitly, so I'm good to know, and so I want to learn more about that. Is there a place with how we do this, since these restorative practices, there's things that we're embedding in how we operate, right, to be more restorative? And then there's things that a teacher or educator in their particular space may create in terms of their classroom norms, the way they do the things in the room, where they solve problems, and then how that engages with their building administration or what have you. Is there some piece in there that we should understand or even, I guess, you know, be prepared to differentiate between how those two things work? Or could we surface a little bit of that, just so, you know, as a community member, you could understand, like, where maybe one way a teacher handles their class versus another, they may be using those practices, but some details might be different, even though they're not differentiating from our plans as a whole. Like, could someone speak to that a little bit, just because I think that's an important aspect?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. It will look different in every classroom or any place you see it, because core to the idea of the relationships in the community is that it's specific to the population you're working with. So like in a high school or a middle school where students are going through multiple classes, there will likely be agreements or classroom norms in a, ideally in every classroom, but in a classroom that's being guided by restorative practices, and they may be different in each one, but the fact that there are those agreements is consistent. And that's intentional, because you want, what we don't want to do is have teachers offering those kinds of things to the students. They want to be co-developed. And I promise this is not a sales pitch, but a lot of what you're talking about is kind of in the introduction. And I'm, since Dr. Fritz mentioned age, I'm going to feel kind of old here, because when I became a teacher and took that classroom management class, the focus was really on an assumption that a classroom needed to be managed, that students need to be controlled. The idea behind a restorative classroom is that through relationships, when you build community, the class manages itself, right? So it really is helping teachers work with skills that enable them to work with students. This goes back to that social discipline window, working with students as opposed to feeling like they're working against them or for them. Does that help answer that? Just, thank you.
I have a question, and then we'll go to Tammy, and then we'll go.
But if restorative practices is what we are using as our key practice, what do you need, or what do we need to do to be able to train all of our administrators and key staff?
That question is, is the question, I mean, that we honestly, like, we talk about it almost every day as it relates to this subject area, this topic, and many others. And what it boils down to is time and the availability of time to bring groups of teachers together, groups of administrators together, whomever the stakeholder group is, and engage in that professional development. And that is a perennial and ongoing challenge, quite frankly put, around this topic and so many others. So it boils down to time and how we can have those opportunities to provide those supports.
I was just thinking, if not, if not this, and without training, then it leads to inconsistency, it can lead to inconsistencies in our practices that then would directly impact our kids and our families. So it's just something to think about for our plan. So hand it over to Tammy, and then we'll go into the second section where people can ask more questions. Okay, follow.
This sounds like we've set up a lot of practices and done a lot of education around these topics. And I'm wondering about, thinking about it, like, take a step back and look at our epidemic of dysregulated kids. And are we, like, focused on, you know, educating our way out of this problem? Is it, you know, are we looking at it simply, it's like we just need to provide more professional development, more training to our teachers and staff, and that will solve the problem? You know, BH&amp;W is a piece of it. Is there, you know, can we throw staff, additional staff? Like, what other solutions besides, you know, you know, we know we have this epidemic of dysregulated kids, you know, what else is on your minds that we're going to be looking at? I just want to say, I think teachers sometimes feel blamed, and that, you know, that if a classroom is poorly managed, that, you know, it's something they've done. So I just, I'm trying to share that perspective of being like, you know, maybe we can't educate ourselves out of this problem.
I think that's the great perspective to share, because I think we, it's not one approach, it's multiple approaches. And what you've heard us describe is sort of multiple approaches, but there are more approaches that we need to take part in as well. And MTSS is going to be a factor in that. Restorative practices, training, all of those things, partnership with parents. I think what we're seeing with, each level's a little different, and you'll see that in the data, but in terms of dysregulated students, some of it comes down to skill, and that kids don't have the skills. Blame it on the pandemic once again, but they come to school not feeling safe and comfortable in the classroom because they feel like they don't understand. And so the easiest thing to do is act out, or is to leave, or not be a part of that. So it really is going to take a full-circle approach in interventions that involve training and professional development and education, partnering with parents, and making sure that we're partnering with outside agencies and social workers and all of those other pieces. Going to take a heavy lift with a lot of people.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Sunita.
You know, thank you very much. The education piece of educators is very important. Have we, or do we already do that? Can we have, like, educator? Can we have like educator in-house who educates the educators? So that they don't have to go out, you know, and it's available whenever needed? Like the time is an issue, have we thought about that or is it being done?
Yeah, so what I, what I think about when I, when I hear you describe that as like a train the trainer model, right? And then we have trainers in, in-house, if you will, that can provide those supports. We absolutely are, we are having those conversations. We have some of those folks in place around different subject areas or topics in the district. But as we look at the challenges related to time for professional development and when and how to offer that, we are continuing as a teaching and learning leadership team to, continuing to come back to this, this conversation around job embedded. And granted, this, this wouldn't apply directly to training around restorative practices. But in other ways, having experts in our district who, who oftentimes are TOSSAs who are the, the best that we have in those content areas to come in alongside others and provide support and professional development in that way. So yes, to that train the trainers model. And we are, we are talking about how to do more of that.
Yeah, I, I was talking specifically for restorative practices because that's what's needed right now.
Yeah.
I can speak to that, thank you Director Garg. We do, so we, we've done the train the trainer model. We went from an initial, we had, we had two trainers initially trained. That team went up to four and at our height, we had seven. Because of what tends to happen with people in positions and movement, we're in a state of rebuilding that team and we're actually looking at different partnerships, one of which is actually with the City of Beaverton Center for Mediation, which I was fortunate to just get to go do a mediator training with because they're offering a no-cost facilitator training for restorative practices. So we're rebuilding that team and actually looking at expanding even into a, a more diverse team in terms of roles in buildings. So with student success coaches and student support specialists in, in buildings, knowing that that's a way to increase capacity outside of central office so that we can have training in different places.
Great, thank you.
Where, our students are coming at five o'clock. So I want to, I think if we go 5:10, 5:15 max for the next section, that would be okay? So let's, can we get started on the next part?
All right, so we're going to move on to looking at semester one discipline data for the school year. And you guys should have the data packets in front of you and we also will walk you through the slides. And so we're going to be giving you an overview of the most frequent violations by outcome at each level. And when we do anything by level, I'll always be speaking to elementary. Robin will be speaking to middle school and Todd will be speaking to high school data. In the elementary level, we're going to look at the five most frequent behaviors in semester one. In the data packet that you have, it'll show 2018, 19 data, 22, 23 data and 23, 24 data. When we're looking at the multiple violations, we're really looking at incidents where there are more than one violation. So a student could have one incident and it could be two violations, including bus misconduct and fighting. So I just wanted to clarify that point. And this year we had 86 in elementary compared to last year, we were at 125. And then for physical altercation, we're at 43, last year we were at 55. And I think one thing to remember, especially at the elementary level, is we've been talking about proactive things that we're doing and we really, suspension is the last resort. It's not our go-to. We work with the BH&amp;W teams to provide support plans for students. We communicate with families. We have outreach to outside organizations, how can we support the student? And in doing all of that, you know, there are times when we do have to suspend students. And when we do, we don't take it lightly at the elementary level or at any level, I'm sure. But for example, like if a student is suspended for physical altercation, it's not going to be the first time that the student has had this incident. It's just that, you know, if they were suspended, it could be the severity of the incident. And that's why when I say the school team has worked with the student and family repeatedly to support the students so that we don't have to suspend, but at some point they do because of the severity. And I just wanted to say, you know, and if a student is suspended, we do have reentry plans. Parents meet with the school team, the principal and work through just for two main reasons. One is to welcome the student back because when you cause harm to, you also feel a certain way. So it's to welcome the student back as well as to talk about how do we repair the harm with those who, that we need to.
So at the middle school level, this is similar presentation to the elementary. You can see that we've highlighted the five most frequent behaviors at the middle school level that resulted in suspension. You will see some things that are common and you will see some new things.
At the high school level, the numbers are pretty stable. It doesn't sound like a great word when it comes to discipline, but in terms of they've been pretty consistent. It was important that we show you the pre-pandemic numbers compared to the year we came, well, to last year and then this year to see sort of what the trend has been. The interesting thing at the high school that you're probably looking at is that tardiness number. And I can tell you that the reason for that is not out of school suspension, but in school. What we have at the high schools currently is a phenomenon since the pandemic where kids love being at school, they just don't love being in class. And it comes back to that skill piece where they do not feel comfortable in classrooms and their way to avoid it is to not be in class, to walk the halls, to be in the bathrooms. And so our schools, our high schools have really tried to focus on student attendance. And so what you will see is kids that just do the loop, they wander the halls, they will be pulled into an office with a grad mentor. So they're out of class, they're in school and they're working on the work they need to be doing. We're not going to give you the benefit of just wandering the halls when you should be in class. But we also recognize being in class is not supportive for you right now and probably not the teacher. So how do we build skills and make sure you're getting support? So the other numbers are pretty consistent from, from last year as, as well as the year before. But attendance has been a, a definite focus. Good news is kids like being at school, but they're there in many ways for the social aspect and not for the learning and that's what we're trying to redirect. The next slide talks about our expulsions from first semester. We have, we had, many of those students are now back in the school because we have shorter-term expulsions. But in the first semester, we had one middle school student and 11 high school students that were expelled. And you can see that the frequent codes were listed there. Of the 11 high school students, I know one incident caused five expulsions. If that gives you any sort of reference point. And then you can see the breakdown demographically of, of where those students reside. Expulsions, we owe a, a, a learning for the kids. So when a kid's expelled, they're still in our system. They go to Project Reset at Merlot Station and Project Reset does an intake where they look at the whole student and say, what's the best program for this student? It might be Project Reset, which is in-person at Merlot Station. It might be Flex Online where the kids are taking online classes. Or in some cases, it might be in-home instruction. And it's a fantastic team. In fact, I'd invite you guys to visit Project Reset at Merlot. The educators that work with those kids are, are really dedicated and the kids get one-on-one attention and in many cases have tremendous success stories because they get the support that they need. And oftentimes, while they can return to the comprehensive school, they oftentimes will find another option. Maybe it's staying at Merlot, maybe it's going to Flex, maybe it's some other option that's getting them the need, the, the learning they need and that reset has really helped them.
When we're looking at summary of responses, one thing to note is that the numbers there show responses and not students. So if you look at the K5 non-exclusionary discipline responses for this year, it's 817. It could be 200 kids, it could be 100. It's just 817 incidents. And one thing to note is that there is an increase, right? In the responses that we have this year in semester one. And we know it's due to dysregulated students, an increase in that. Especially at the elementary, we know that the kindergartners who are coming to us are more impacted and have challenging needs. And the district has already responded by providing parent support to kindergarten in all 34 elementary schools. So we're hoping that that is going to help. And in conversations with principals and teachers about kindergarten, they already are so thankful for the support that they've had in the classrooms. And the other thing that leads to the increase is just that there's more rigorous and consistent reporting. We are a huge district and we're not there yet in terms of being consistent across all 34 schools in elementary and then the middle schools and high school and options. But it's something that we know that we have to work on to ensure that there are consistent practices in, in reporting across all the schools. And I think one last thing to note is just that there is definitely an increase just because of awareness of parents and just tools that people have now to report bias incidents or to just not be afraid, right? Just to say what's going on. And so that also has led to an increase in just the reports. In the next part, we're going to be looking at discipline incidents by race, ethnicity and level. And we just want to acknowledge the value of this data, but also note that it is hard to see because of the disproportionate data that we see. And so if you look at the red, that is the percent of enrollment for the, that student group and the blue columns are percent of total incidents. So when you look at the student group that's Black and African-American, we have 3.69 enrollment percentage and then the discipline incidence is 4.87. And that's what you want to see is that proportionate, right? That they are about the same. And we do acknowledge and see that in our Hispanic group, our males in special ed, it is not proportionate, it's very disproportionate. And we acknowledge that there's work to do there as a district. And I think that our school improvement plans and focusing on safe and thriving and making students feel welcome, that they belong and matter is going to help us just connect the students to the school. And so that's something that we aim for and we're going to continue to do that.
Moving to the middle school level, you see some similar patterns in disproportionality at the middle school level. We see a disproportionate data with, with our Hispanic students, our, our male students and our students who receive special education services. Very, very similar to the elementary. One difference that I noted in the middle level from the elementary is we, we see now a disproportionality with our ELL students and that's different from what we saw at the elementary.
And as Bow eloquently said, this is something that frustrates all of us when we look at the disproportionality of our student body. And at the high school level, it's, it's actually elevated with our Hispanic population. Nationally, students of color are, are excluded at a rate of two to three times more than white students. And unfortunately, in this case in our district, we are at that mark as well. So we're at about two times the amount of, of white students. And so we recognize in our system that there's work to be done. We've talked about some of those avenues, meaning relationship building, case, BH&amp;W. We also talk about how do we use our equity modules to make sure our, our classroom teachers, our administrators, our counselors, our classified staff are well-versed in supporting all of our students, but in particular, our students of color as well. We also recognize the sped population, our ELL population at the high school, there's a discrepancy there as well. So that's going to be continued efforts on our part. And, and by and large, to the male population in general is something that's a focus for all three levels as we work around student discipline. And then the next chart just basically summarizes that K-12. So it just takes those numbers and shows you from a K-12 level where we are in terms of our disproportionality. And I think Bow touched on this a little bit, but some of what we're experiencing is, 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 is good in the reporting field. Meaning we're getting more reports because there are no avenue, newer and more avenues for parents and students to report. We have Oregon Safe Schools that every student has on their ID card that they can call in anonymously. We have the bias reporting tool with the Office of Equity Inclusion. We have school campaigns and social media campaigns around bullying and harassment in particular. So there's, there's definitely a heightened sense of making sure that our schools are safe, both by students and by staff. And then lastly, I would share, just as a, sort of a comparison about expulsions, we go back to expulsions pre-pandemic to post-pandemic. Pre-pandemic, remember, we didn't have case, we didn't have that process. And post-pandemic, we have used case. And so I do want to share that before the pandemic, we had 52 students of color, percent of our students of color in the BSD. We expelled 70 students in 2018, 2019. 73% of those students expelled were students of color. And 68% of, of the students expelled had drug and alcohol offenses. Fast forward to last year, where 58% of our total BSD population are students of color, we expelled way less than what we did before the pandemic, 26 students. And there was no discrepancy in terms of disproportionality. 58% of those students were students of color. And our drug and alcohol expulsions were significantly reduced as we changed how we worked with students with drug and alcohol issues. And our school support specialists were also, our substance use specialists were also able to use with families and students around drug and alcohol abuse.
So we have about four, four to six minutes to talk or ask our questions. So I will go around, maybe do one round and then we'll check in about that, what next steps. Yeah, that might, I don't want to rush us through, but I want to make sure everybody gets at least one question in and it sounds like we can come back and continue at a different time. Oh, do you mean like after the kids today? Oh, at a different meeting, okay, great. So let's go with one round, do you want to start? Oh, okay, Tammy, we'll go this way then.
Okay, good. And I, Bow, I think you mentioned we have some inconsistencies at our elementary schools. So we, we can't see that in the data that you've given us. Are you aware of, you know, we've got racial disparities that we can see. Are you aware that some schools are worse at that than others? And what are we doing to, you know, it's not great right now to see the difference in, in, in the, the outcomes based on race. Is it potentially worse at some schools and what are we doing about that?
We could see the data for each school, we don't have that on hand right now. And I think as execs, when we meet with the principals and go see, we do talk about their response to discipline, right, to behavior. And we do work with the principals on just how to support all students and looking at their data and digging deeper and say, you know, like if we see a high percentage of Hispanic students, like what is the support that's in place and what is leading to that? We always think about the ABCs, as was Todd mentioned earlier, like what is causing this? And then also, how is the staff responding? And then how do we support the student and the staff? And so we haven't really compared schools in terms of just like who's higher than the other in terms of like disproportionate data, but we do have the data for all of the schools.
Justice?
I think I have more of a comment, more of the thing I'm curious about now, send it to leadership and to Gustavo that maybe we can, so we can start to build up. Because one of my things is just reading through the first time is are there developmental differences in how behavior is categorized? Like I noticed there's a higher level of like physical altercation being the discipline category with the elementary and then it starts to shift as the kids get older in middle school. I was surprised at the dip in high school, not totally because I used to work in the middle school and I know how middle schools are with fighting. So like I would like at some point to help with clarity, like developmental expectations and then how we look at those when we categorize what, what the student is doing that, you know, in terms of behavior, because I think that's in tune to what the type of feedback we've been getting through the last, this year around like discipline issues or not discipline issues or things that are being responded to or not being responded to. I think surfacing how we rate, how we categorize what student behaviors, you know, maybe are going off track and therefore there's a discipline response. And then how we engage with all of that and, you know, and I think that's some of the MTSS. I know that's a part of that conversation. So I would like to learn more about that and hopefully we can talk about that more in future conversations.
Uh, Ugana?
Yeah, the question that was burning in my heart, Tammy just asked it and it was answered. I have more of the comment. I, I'm happy that we all recognize and acknowledge that there are discrepancies in these reports. And with that acknowledgement and recognition means that we are seeing that something is wrong with the system and we are looking towards working together to make some changes and make sure that we change whatever is broken in the system that is causing that. And I also want to point out that I'm happy with the significant good result that we got post-pandemic. And I also want to point out that I'm happy with the significant good result that we got post-pandemic. And I'm just curious to know what caused the numbers to get better? Because I'm looking, I'm seeing seventy percent, from seventy percent to, was it nineteen percent that I saw? But I want to know, was it the implementation of the restorative practices that made those numbers to calm down in post-pandemic?
I think it's a combination of a number of factors. One is we changed how we address drug and alcohol. And because that typically was a second offense and you were expelled. At that point, you see the numbers that most of the expulsions pre-pandemic were from drug alcohol offenses. We've changed that in more of an education model. Now, if you do reach the fourth or fifth offense, you could reach expulsion at that point. So I think we moved to educating students and getting them the resources that they need. I think the case process has been a part of that as well, that administrators now work in collaboration with other educators outside of their building. It becomes very, you become very myopic when you're in the building. You're dealing with kids in your building with your admin team. And sometimes it's really advantageous to have other people that come in with different perspectives that can help you problem solve before it reaches that expulsion point.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work. I appreciate it.
Sunita?
I'll go after.
Thank you. I noticed when I look at the trend that the exclusion incidences have gone down for elementary and high school, and it went up a little bit for middle school. And it could be because of the restorative practices, case, and then drug and alcohol, how it is addressed. But I also noticed that the non-exclusion went up quite a bit. So are these, which is expected if you're going to add because of how it is being reported and they're not being expelled? So do we see when we apply restorative practices in the non-exclusion incidences that there is, those incidences are repeated or not repeated? What's the trend like there? And the support system, you know, for the classroom, what is it like? I'd like to hear a bit about that.
Thank you for the question. I think that the restorative process is so well-built into the schools right now. It's a standard process that we all use on just such a regular basis. We do see that some students going through the process can really, really benefit and grow in their learning. And because ultimately, that is a teaching experience. And it is about teaching the deficit skills and helping to support the learning of the student in the context of a situation that might not have gone well, might not have gone as planned. But giving the students the opportunity to do that learning in that process often will result in a shift. When we do see that there is a repeated pattern, that's a time when that kind of data comes to a team like the Behavioral Health and Wellness Team, and it's identified. We're having a consistent conflict between these students at this time, and we need to talk about additional interventions. And then we talk about another learning strategy. What's our next step to teach the skills, right? Knowing that the initial intervention is not getting the result that we need. So it's a constant teaching and learning process. And at its foundation is the idea that behavior is a form of communication. And we're trying to understand what the student is telling us.
Melissa?
My question builds off of that idea of that if we are seeing dysregulated behavior, it's often a communication of unmet needs. And before the pandemic, we were seeing the needs of our students spreading a little, I think. And the pandemic probably spread it even more. And I'm wondering, and we've heard this in our school visits, where we go and we visit, and the teachers, in the general ed setting, their skill set, like their triangle, to approach their triangle, their skill set is meeting this spectrum of the need. And then once students are identified for special education, the needs are met over here. But there's a gap in between of where the general ed teachers are and the students' needs and where the sped services kick in. And other resources too. Todd, you mentioned it's not just sped services. Lots of other resources outside of just the general ed. That gap, is that, how is that being addressed for our teachers? Because I imagine that causes a lot of tension and really just, it's got to be so frustrating for the students because their needs aren't being met, and it has to be professionally frustrating too.
So that when you're talking about that gap, that's that tier two of those interventions. And that is a piece that we're really working on building out academically as well as behavior and socially emotionally. And then, of course, tier three on top of that, what that looks like. So I think one of the challenges is building a tool belt of multiple tools for all of our educators and recognizing how to be able to juggle, if you will, because there's so many different needs.
I think behavior is a form of communication, and it's currently showing that it's hard for our English language learners, our sped students, and our Hispanic students to experience our system. And when I was looking at the data, saw that fighting, like at high school level and middle school, was quite high for Hispanic students. And they're not violent kids. Hispanics are not violent kids. Kids that are receiving special education services are not violent kids. Our system is causing something for them to react, whether it's microaggressions, macroaggressions, whatever they're experiencing in the classroom, in the hallways, in the bathrooms, is causing our kids to want to fight, or not want. I don't think they want to fight. I think it's causing our kids to show us with their behaviors what they're experiencing. And that is very concerning to me, and I think to our board probably as well. I'll speak for myself, but I think I can speak for our board. So I think that if we need to change that experience, I don't, I don't know if empathy interviews would help us understand what they're experiencing so that we can actually make shifts, immediate shifts, and important shifts in what, how, and what we do. It's not, and if we are putting our money into restorative practices or our hope into restorative practices, then we need to require that training for our administrators and those other adults in the system that are making those decisions for our kids. And if not restorative practice, what other skills can we use? But I think if, it's imperative that we do that. March 5th is our next meeting that we can actually look at behavior again. And we can add, see, let people sit with this information and then bring it back to our team. And if people have questions, maybe have them ahead of time so that we can kind of think through some of those. Or, and if, there'll be some time for you all to think about stuff too, so that if there are things that we are doing or other places, or if it's a team approach where we have the same way that we have Behavioral Health and Wellness Teams that are looking at things, maybe there's a team approach that go places to schools to support where there's, where it's bubbling up and really get, help us get to that critical work that needs to get done. Because our kids are not violent.
So I think the goal is March 5th. We already have a study session attached a few minutes to be able to get more. We just didn't have enough time. And the kids are outside, so that's, that's why. So thank you for your patience as a board.
So what I don't know right now is if we, do we stop our meeting and have the kids come in? Or are they coming to present first and then we're going to eat together?
They already are eating, so if the board wants to go and get pizza and salad and then come back and eat here.
Do we, does our meeting continue to be live streamed while we're eating?
Yep.
Okay, great.
It's a community. It's a community. That's okay.
So everybody will be eating with our students?
We got a lot, we have a lot of pizza.
Okay. And are we sitting in this space to eat? Or are we, we don't have tables to share? What do we, what's the? Oh, the other room. Oh, okay, great. Thank you. So we're pausing.
Welcome, everybody. We're going to start our board meeting up again. So it's five thirty, and we're continuing our meeting now with our students. And welcome, and I want to see who we hand over to.
I think I'm happy to do some introductions, but I'm going to quickly get myself out of the way. Pat McCreary, he him pronouns, identify as white, and I work in the Office of Equity and Inclusion, where together with my partner in the office, Dr. Tatiana Savo. where together with my partner in the office, Dr. Tatiana Savios, and Christina Schultz, Assistant Administrator at Flex, or what's the official long title? That's fine, that'll do. Um, we are lucky, and Todd Corsetti as well, Secondary, uh, Executive Administrator for Secondary Schools. We get to work with this amazing group of student leaders. So the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee is a group of, when everyone is present, which hasn't been able to happen yet, but it would be twenty-four students, two representatives from each of our high schools' option programs and other programs, um, who were either nominated or self-advocated into the position, or a combination of the two, serve on this committee, um, to really be representative voices for the entire district, and are doing some amazing work. And I'm gonna put on my classroom educator hat and just say that, that the honor of getting to work with this group is truly amazing, this is what keeps people in education, because we get to see the tremendous leadership. So I'll do some quick introductions, and then I think the group is gonna share out a summary, um, of some of the areas of focus they've been working on, and then really wanted to have an opportunity to engage in conversation with the board, and I do believe there's been a request for some opportunity to get some feedback from the board. So, okay, perfect. Um, so I'll start with introductions, you might recognize Eric Vargas, right here in the middle from Base.
Oh.
He was one of your public comment, uh, commenters at the January Board Meeting. We have Sahas, Sahas Kaganti, did I say the last name correctly?
Yeah.
Awesome, from Westview, one of our co-presidents. We have Jordan Sargent from Aloha High School, who is one of the school board speakers as well, so you might see Jordan at a board meeting. And then we have Sarah Judd from ISV, who is co-president with Sahas. And we have others who were planning on coming tonight, they send their regrets. Um, there's a lot of homework going on. And so we always say prioritize schoolwork, prioritize family, and so they are here in spirit with us. But with that, I think I'll turn it over to, uh, student leaders to maybe share out summaries of some of the areas of focus you're working.
Okay, so, um, we, uh, just like a quick reflection, I guess, we have a, like, a kind of framework of three things that are, we really wanted to focus on, and the three issues that we really wanted to tackle. Um, in the group that I worked in, which is, uh, with Jordan, and also our friend Emma, you know, joins us in spirit, is about, uh, a lack of affinity groups, which is the most observable symptom of this phenomenon that is going on within our schools that we call covert bigotry, in which, uh, students and staff may either be, like, unknowingly complicit or directly perpetuating, um, like, inequality in our schools, and that leads to, like, a fracturing of our student population. And we saw the biggest way to trick this is by strengthening the affinity groups that already exist within our schools. Um, we, as the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee, wanted to, like, uh, make a, uh, uh, school environment that is conducive to, you know, transparency, that, uh, our, like, our staff, our administrators, our, uh, school board members that, like, definitely want to improve. Um, the schools actually have an opportunity to do that, and they don't know how to do that. Um, we would like to start by, uh, focusing on a plurality of Black student unions within the district. Uh, we currently have only about two schools out of all of our option and, uh, com- comprehensive high schools that do not have a BSU leadership or BSU advisors. Uh, so we wanted to, um, give them the resources that they need to have, to establish, like, a population within the school. And then this is what the, uh, ultimate goal of re-establishing the Black Student Summit that took place for students, uh, before COVID, I think, the last year that we ended was twenty nineteen. But there has been a, uh, exponential increase in demand for something like that to happen, not only within our Black students, but also within, uh, students of different minority groups, like the Latin students, as well as, uh, GSA students. Um, and I think that, uh, in order to promote our message of belonging and believing and achieving, we should give our students the opportunity to belong. So that's what our group has come up with. Uh, I would really, uh, we would really appreciate, uh, more feedback about, like, how we can maybe accomplish our goals, uh, within this year, or, like, potentially lay the groundwork to accomplish our goals within next year. And then, uh, once we expand past establishing, re-establishing the Black Student Summit, how can that be, um, applied for other minority groups?
Perfect.
Yeah.
Pretty cool. Do we wanna have us talk about one topic, or do you wanna go around and then talk in general? What would be most helpful?
I was just gonna ask that, I'm, and, I'm kinda for board members and for, um, students. Would it be helpful to be, like, you want questions now on that area of focus, and then we can move to the next one? Or do you wanna wait till we get them all out, and then?
Could we do questions for each group as they happen?
Sure.
So that it's more refreshing, like, board members' minds first?
Mm-hmm. Let's do that.
Yeah, that's true.
Karen, I'm the board chair, she her, again, her name's. I, um, heard you say that, uh, I'm wondering what, not to put it on the students, but, um, you said there's two schools that don't have the ESUs. Um, have, are they, do we have students from those schools in your group that, or, um, in the bigger group that can, um, I, I am totally agreement of the need for affinity spaces, but I'm just, I'm going into a place of, what would be the next step needed to support students in creating, and that's, that's, it could be for, Dr. Baldetis, um, or the staff? Um, what, or why don't we have more affinity spaces? Is it something with contracts for teachers, and is it something with?
How much is the student population, I'm saying that part, and the vice chair, she her, but, uh, I, I mean, also in total agreement, we should have. But, um, you said there are only two schools that has BSUs, that do not, that do not have. So do, do they have enough student population to have a, do they?
Um, so, Jordan, sorry. Um, so, when looking at it, there was one school that does have a BSU, like, they have their advisor, they have a president and co-president, but they lacked having, even though they had, like, things going out there saying, we are here, we want more people into the group, there just didn't seem to be anybody attending any of the meetings. And it, they didn't, well, they were able to get it actually running because of the lack of people who were going into those meetings, and also, just in general.
Um, and that's in one of the two schools?
One of the two, one of the two, but also, I, I'm not, we're not sure about the other one. I'm sure we're the. Maybe. I don't think.
Well, in a technical sense, they don't have a BSU advisors, and stuff like this. Um, but that's actually another thing that I kind of wanted to touch on, also a little bit to approach your question, like, why don't we have this, like, you know, really want this? But it's kind of, we are limited to the capabilities of our teachers. Um, and if there is no teacher willing to step up and be like, I'll be a supervisor for this club, the club will not exist. Um, which is why we really wanted to have more, like, uh, cross-district events for students specifically, to, uh, build more interest, uh, within the, like, schools, like, the respective schools for that club to exist, with the hopes that someone's mind will be changed, that it'll take a pencil of being the advisor to that club.
Hmm. How do you guys feel about online club meetings and then have, uh, events outside? Because that would make it easier for people to join. I don't know how that would work.
Although, it definitely seems like the more convenient, um, option, like, I can, like, see what you're thinking like that. I think people that are my age or people that are in high school are extremely fatigued of having to meet online for a plethora of things, like, we have social media for that, and, you know, we can always run it up in the group chat, like, there are asynchronous ways that we can communicate. But the, the, the closeness that is, uh, acquired when you're in a physical space with other people that, you know, share the same, like, origin as you, and are wanting to talk about the same things as you, is a irreplaceable.
Yeah, but you could take all of them and meet, like, few times, because at least that would get them together, and then, uh, meetings outside, you know, like, events.
Hmm.
It's just a thought. I, I understand what you're saying, it's only as a backup, because it's not happening yet.
Right, I can't see everybody, so I can't, like, call on people. And I also wanna say it's not something we wanna put on students to do, it should be as an adult to bring this out. But with your, you know, like, okay, so I, I see Tammy, Melissa?
Oh, no.
Okay. Justice, anybody else? Okay, so let's go Tammy.
Uh, hi, Tammy, so, what, I'm a she her. Um, what are the barriers to our staff stepping up and doing this? Are they paid for this work? Um, it's, you know, I presume added to their, you know, you tell me, you know, why is it that we're not able to find somebody to do this in?
Yeah, so I can speak to that. Um, the, at, the policy around, and I, I apologize for not remembering which policy it is, or what the title is, but it's around student groups. Um, there is great openness to the ability of students to form a group, right? So, um, from my years as a teacher at Westview, students would get an idea for a group, and the, the two requirements were that they needed to have a student population, and they needed to have a staff member who could advise them, um, largely because of the supervisory nature of it. So speaking to the in-person component, if we're gonna have students gathered in schools, we need a staff member to do that. But that advising is consistently voluntary, and so that does, um, that can, that can present a burden, um, for staff. Um, there are very few student groups, um, they tend not to be clubs, they tend more to be, like, extracurricular activities that have a, a paid or stipended advisor, or an advisor where that's part of their, their job. So I was gonna, that's, that's one of the challenges, or, and one of the opportunities as well, at, at finding, um, folks who can do that. Um, one of the other ones, from a student perspective, and I wanted to share, um, to kind of celebrate some of the efforts that are going on. We have some staff who are recognizing that one of the challenges with high school-based, most of our affinity groups are at the high school level. And then what happens there is students age, right? And so the, the, the clubs or the affinity groups can really be student-based in terms of, you get a, a group that's led by a strong leader, who is maybe a strong leader in ninth grade, and then tenth grade, and then eleventh, and then they go, and if there isn't that stream of leadership, a club can go. So we do have some staff who are actually working on vertical articulation, working on affinity groups at the high school level, and then the feeder middle schools, and the upper grades of elementary, so that the, the reality of an affinity group in a school is just something that kids know is there. So those are dual efforts that we're working on. Um, the staff piece is a.
Big one.
Is a big one.
And sometimes at the, you know, I think we had seventy-two, seven, I was GSA, the first, for example. So it just went with high school, that's.
The great.
Get rid of it with high schools, it's just, you know, bad, you have, so.
Um, Justice?
Um, no.
Right?
Justice, Raji, I'm thinking. And, um, well, when I say these, and I don't know, uh, connectedly, but I know, well, my daughter, her home's in South British, she's not, I'm, her official title is here, but they're, like, I'm speaking at their business, and so, I guess, I'll say two things. One, my experience supporting her with organizing is, there seems sometimes be building different understanding of, like, how student affinity groups work, and that's why, and the help sort of, um, so from a training or volunteering perspective, I'm willing to help, if, you know, to the degree it's appropriate, we're trying to get some coordination, um, but also know that, and I don't know where that work is at, that people that are trying to provide some support to BSU leaders with, like, how to, like, organize your, set your group. Um, so, I would say, one, I'm trying to say, I'm on board to help in any way I can, and especially around having a summit, you know, you know, that kind of operation, I'd be helping help even, or helping find the people to help the kids, to get done, and, and whatever advice they need. So, like, sprung administration, if they need the board, it's, it's a process. Um, that's my experience, folks don't understand the process. Um, I, I would say that I've, I've received feedback, these anecdotes, over the years, supporting my daughter and others, where people always feel that, like, folks understand why they want to do this, and so they, they have mixed emotions about jumping out there, 'cause they don't want to be, you know, they don't wanna be discouraged by their peers, that, that they're not, they're not supporting. No, you're good, you go on, go back. I'll be happy to.
I'm so sorry, what was your name again?
Justice, Raji.
Oh, um, you, uh, my name is Raji.
I'm Ligana. Yes, uh, I'm Ligana, and, um, she her. My question is around the supervisory, um, aspect, 'cause what I'm hearing from your staff is that we don't have, there are no teachers who are step in to supervise. So how, um, how involved is the teacher who is supervising? And the reason I ask that question is, is this something that can be alternated? Like, somebody can volunteer to supervise, um, in a meeting today, and then another person can take over another day? You know, not having just one teacher being the main supervisor, that might be harder to do, but there are different people signing up to do that, so I'm asking, whereby supervising, if they are so involved in the meetings that it has to be done by one person, or if it's something that is second. People might sign up.
That example does exist, so there are, there are a lot of student groups where there might be co-advisors. Uh, the level of involvement of the advisor is oftentimes really more about how much the students want the advisor to be involved. And I, I advised many clubs in my time where, like, they just let me know, we just need you to be here. Um, and, and I would, Sarah, catch me on this. For, for student affinity groups, I think a lot of times there might be a place where if the advisor shares that affinity, they might serve in a mentor role, but a lot of times in an affinity group, really it's just about protecting that space for students and securing that space. So the shared, shared advising can definitely, um, there might be some, some building leader prerogative in that, in that there are some coordinating things that more people just makes more challenging sometimes. So some leaders might have a, like, a need for a lead advisor, but definitely, they could, they could share that.
So, I have one more thing on that. Uh, so, um, when I worked, we, we had ESUs in every school, so we actually had that event that you, you know, that you talked about, um, and we brought in, like, all, all the different, um, affinity groups together. And, um, and so, I think, it's not something that, it's not a huge puzzle to solve, really. Um, it's in the sense of, for us adults in the system, um, it's just a matter of, it doesn't take a special skill set, so not just any teacher should be running a BSU, or, it could be harmful if you have the wrong teacher in that space, honestly. So we, in some cases, we brought in community partners with an adult from the school to help facilitate the space. So, um, that's another way, if we don't have teachers that are setting up, that maybe there's somebody that would, but just doesn't feel comfortable, like, I don't have the skill set to run a BSU, or I'm not, you know, um, as a white male, or a white female, or however they identify, or a Latina. Um, and so, thinking about, I think, I don't know, Gustavo, like, what is our process that you, you would think about having?
I think for us, coming up with a plan internally as a staff, and then we're laying that plan back out to schools, principals, uh, to students, uh, student leaders, and then back to the board, reporting out to the board how the plan's going. I mean, that's typical, right? So it's us creating the plan internally, now that we know the students have this, and they've been working on it, is what is a plan internally, this is staff work, making sure that we report back to the board on progress, any obstacles, and, again, it just, and how we leverage the community, I think the point that is being made here is how we leverage the community partners to ensure that, you know, because, again, a lot of times the staff need to sit in the room and just keep their mouth shut, because the kids, students facilitate meetings. They just need a advisor, it's amazing, so.
And sometimes they might need, they could call in somebody to help, like, it might be in a space where I actually, yeah, yeah, we're here, we're hanging out, but we actually don't know, like, we wanna learn about microaggressions, or how to, you know, how to, whatever it is that you're, that you're experiencing, that whole point of the affinity space is to be able to be in a safe space to share, um, what you're experiencing, what's how that impacts. So I think, it sounds like Dr. Baldetis could, um, follow up with staff to come up with some, some.
I mentioned in the, in the prior session, as you know, kind of a, the intersection of our efforts and family engagement. And one model I can share is there's two organizations that we've been partnering with, um, for a long time, and now in the realm of family engagement, both the Beavis and Black Parent Union, and the Kala Huaian Civic Club. And both those organizations offer, I won't call them district-wide affinity spaces, because they're really centered in the organization, so they're more community-wide. But both of those can be places where it helps, we work with partner organizations to go from the school level to the community level, so that they can engage in that cross-school, um, affinity, which also helps in those places where there aren't ESUs, that gives folks at those schools a place to join, to see about starting something like that, or other clubs.
And for the bigger, um, event, we would bring, I mean, we have, like, four hundred students together from all over, all the schools came together, and it was, students, it got to the point where the students were organizing. And it was, students, it got to the point where the students were organizing small sessions. Throughout one of the schools, on one of the, didn't have school, and it was just like, it was everybody together. There's some shared experience, but there's also different experiences and there's a lot of intersectionality between students. To your, some students are black, only black, some of them are Latino and black, or Asian and, you know, um, or white and. And so there were spaces available within that bigger space of when we brought everybody together. For you to choose whatever spaces you wanted to go and be in space in. So um, I think that's something else, and it um.
So no, we told the kids six o'clock because I got into school night, so I want to make sure that.
We got like nine minutes left.
Please, I know this is a school night. We want to be respectful for you, because I know you had to wait a little bit too. So I'll copy your stuff.
Alright, thanks. So the next group, besides affinity groups, there, we have three groups. So the second group is more about socioeconomic disparities specifically in extracurricular activities. Um, we know that in BSD there already is a lot of programs that sort of support academic disparities, especially with lower income and higher income folks. Or like one statistic was actually that Pat told me was that the bottom twenty percentile of students account for over forty-nine percent of students with failing marks. And we also know that ECs and extracurricular activities at schools and outside of schools. Also play a key role, or a major role in how these students succeed outside of school when they graduate and when they sort of take a career in a certain field. And so the main problem that we wanted to address was sort of reaching this gap, alleviating the gap on socioeconomic, socioeconomic disparities in extracurricular programs. Whether it be schools, whether it be internships, whether it be like different organizations outside of schools, nonprofits, businesses, stuff like that. We wanted to make it so that lower income students with more socioeconomic disparities had an easier time getting access to these. Sort of extracurriculars that maybe more high-income students participate. So that eventually we can maybe breach that gap and make it so that lower income students succeed, right? And right now, we're actually sort of employing two different key initiatives. The first initiative is about spreading awareness towards extracurriculars. The second initiative is more about funding and making it so that these lower-income students have the funds necessary. So that they can succeed and they can participate in these extracurriculars that mainly higher-income folks participated. Um, currently for the awareness side of things, we're creating a sort of website that we were hoping that BSD could maybe advertise. This website would have a ton of different extracurricular opportunities that perhaps whether students or teachers could maybe input in. Whether it be different clubs, whether it be different internships, nonprofits, or outside community organizations that might. Want or might want like high school volunteers, right? And so with this website, we can make it so that if it's accessible to pretty much every student in the school district, the lower income, the higher income, the middle income folks. We can make it so that all these students have access to these extracurriculars. They have knowledge of these extracurriculars, so they could eventually participate in these extracurriculars. And we're hoping that we can gain support on that, to maybe advertise it to as many students as we can. In order to succeed in our goal of alleviating those disparities. Then the second goal, which is probably going to be a lot more hefty, it's related to funding. I know that funding is a pretty disputed thing. Especially in the school district, it's a big thing that you guys participate in. And so the main thing that we were wondering is, I understand that there's funds specifically for academic fees, like fee waivers and like sports. Fee waivers and like AP exams, fee waivers and all those types of things. We were wondering if we could maybe get a fund or we could maybe, or if there are already funds that exist. We could advertise those funds for students that want to participate in extracurricular activities, whether it be like speech and debate. Waiving fees for students to participate in different tournaments, whether it be stuff like DECA or HOSA. Where we can maybe reduce fees, not even waive them for the state conferences, for the district conferences, maybe even the national conferences. And we were wondering how exactly that process could work. Um, maybe if you guys knew of any outside funding sources, corporate, philanthropic, stuff like that, that could maybe fund in endeavor like this. And yeah, if you knew of any other people we could maybe talk to. So that's pretty much what we're working on.
Yes. Dr. Valdez, what do you say? I don't know, board members?
I want to hear him first.
Is it for me?
Yeah.
To do any of what?
So I think the awareness is our website. I think we could work on that in terms of what, what are the nuances for our website? Where we can put a student page possibly, and it's something we can work, again, we can do whatever, I guess, me in this room can do whatever we really want to do, to be honest with you. As long as we don't violate any rules of engagement with with law. So I think let's just get together, figure out what we can do.
And just the vetting of whatever we put on the website would be the only thing I could think of that, one of the things. So vetting the companies or the, you know, making sure if we're putting that on our website, that it's safe for our students to um, be able to participate in that activity or whatever.
Like the links, the links, just make sure, again, we want to make sure that everything, you said exactly what you said. And the other one regarding funding, that's a, that's a million dollar question that we, it goes back to advisor, not being, it's it's the million dollar question. But I think looking at what we currently have done before in in the recent past with fee waivers, reduction in. Uh, the participation fees, they haven't been a reduction these last couple, couple of years. And how do we continue that? How do we provide maybe more scholarship funds for kids that are maybe needed? The needle of college, and how do we also advertise that? Because I think that's one of the things, how do we advertise that? Because sometimes kids, students don't know. So how do we advertise that there are fee waivers for areas of support? Because there are a lot of people that want to help to.
Like a social media campaign at the beginning of the year around what those are by the students, like you all make it, because I don't know what.
Do they have, um, do you guys have a social media cards or?
Yeah, we're actually in the process of making one. I think it'll be up in the next week or so.
Yes, we uh, we created um, Instagram page with the, of the CCI. And it's just being finalized with the, with the right logo, the login. Access to it.
And on the topic of social media, we maybe like, you know the Beaverton SD page, the Instagram page that has like five thousand followers? We saw that it got a lot of engagement during the winter, that winter thing. So we were wondering if maybe we could also use that for some of the advertisement opportunities.
That, is that something Shelly, is that something that goes through Shelly?
I think Shelly might be able to help you with that, that and maybe, I don't even know, like maybe a website for them, like the student uh, group website. And put all the things that they want to do. I don't know how uh, and how much time that would take. But another thing about grant is that people like to give to a nonprofit organization. So maybe you can uh, work with uh, Beaverton Education Foundation and have it funneled through there. Because it would be easier to give it to them than to a, you know, a student organization, which does not have like a five oh one C three. So it might be worth talking to. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up, because um, one of the folks that we got in touch with, or we're getting the group in touch with is um, BEF. So um, you and I have been doing the emailing back and forth, and that's where those responses are coming from. So we're at a point where I might want to connect you directly, depending if you're open to that.
Once you are done with that, then you can talk to me. You can email me. I can provide you some sources, outside sources.
Alright, thank you.
Problem solved. Um, so the website idea, a lot of the high schools have, if you go to a high school, they have extracurriculars listed, like clubs that you can join. Um, so what is the, what is the um, improvement that you're seeing that needs to happen from the school-based website with those lists? Versus the district accessible, everybody can access it at the district level?
Um, the thing about the school ones is that people kind of look at those before a club fair and then never look at them again. Because it's kind of hard to get involved with clubs midway through the year when the club started and were established in like October, November.
Okay.
And so the problem that we wanted to solve with a district-wide website would be not to just advertise school clubs. But also advertise other internship opportunities that could maybe actually benefit a student's professional career when they're older, right? Like, there are tons of internships that are super accessible to pretty much any student involved, but they just don't know about them. And so that's one thing that a district-wide website could kind of solve.
So it seems, oh. Um, additionally, there are some clubs that are only available in certain comprehensive high schools. And they're not, but there are students that by word of mouth will hear that those clubs exist. So for, for example, robotics, right now, there's only two robotics clubs in the district. But students that know other students that like robotics, they end up getting into those clubs, but not because they. There's any information on the new district page. It's only because.
Word of mouth.
But if there was, and I've heard personally, because I do robotic stuff, um, from kids that are like, oh, do you know where there's robotics in high school?
Why, yes, I do.
Right, yeah. But if there was some place where they could find HOSA clubs, or if they could find different clubs, then we're only at certain sites.
So adding the district website to those school websites could be beneficial. Not finding what you're looking for, wanting to look more, click here to get to those accessible. And then um, I don't know what the, I know for, I, because I stood there and watched it at one of the school sites at a high school. A student came up to the principal to ask for a signature to go get tickets to the winter dance. Um, and she qualified for free and reduced lunch. And so because, is there, is there a waiver because she didn't have to pay for the winter dance? Is there a waiver for that? What does that look like for clubs and other extracurriculars?
That's, yeah, and that's part of the communication that we did. There are waivers in place for those. So many of, many of the school fees are waived for students um, who qualify for free and reduced lunch or who are supported by McKinney-Bento program, things like that. Um, I think what what the real focus of the group is looking at is what are, what are those fees that aren't part of that that we haven't identified yet?
Okay, like the state, state tournaments, because that isn't part of that bucket that's waived.
Travel to places, so where are there resources that can support students? So that there literally are no barriers behind your group's work now, but so there's no barriers for their participation in those things.
Okay, so broadening the bucket that qualifies for those waivers.
And also spreading awareness for that bucket, right?
Yeah, right, okay. And then also, I thought it was so bold and brave of her, like in the middle of, like she just brought up the form and I was like, wouldn't. It was so, super cool. But I also imagine that's a barrier in of itself to take a piece of paper to an adult saying, I qualify. I just, I felt and it was interesting and cool and interesting all at the same time.
So I think we have some steps for that. Um, and maybe that I heard we're um, we'll work with our communications department to look at and see what. The feasibility is for the website. We're looking at connecting with BEF to, to make sort of like a little non, a nonprofit or something. So that the money for supporting students with those extra fees could come through there perhaps. Um, and people can donate there, um, and then possible campaign just to get information out that, um, to students in different ways.
So our next one, I've been uh, selected to get to read to you the summary of the third group because none of the students from this group could come. And unfortunately, I'm probably not going to be able to respond to any questions about it. They might use this as an opportunity to suggest another meeting between the board and the student group. Um, I gotta use my eyes. So um, the last group is on student success and engagement. And they say with student success and engagement being our main concern, our team would like to propose that all schools have built-in periods for meeting with teachers. And accessing academic support. Um, these particular students have seen at their schools how student, how important student-teacher connection is. As well as how vital it is to have the opportunity to visit and receive help from teachers during the school day. When students are involved in extracurricular activities or have outside responsibilities, seeking help from teachers can be difficult. Using advisory periods to allow students to access help from their teachers will ensure that all students at all schools feel supported by and connected with their teachers. Um, and then they have a a timing of of actions that they want to take. What I can share is that I think the the gist of the um, discussion and concerns from this group was that. The, whether it's access tutorial or study hall or however that period exists at different high schools. It doesn't exist consistently in a way that allows students to access the the resources they need, um, when they need help. Um, so a a term that kept coming up was kind of the idea of like, in a collegiate setting, the idea of office hours. Or something like that where students can go to get that help. So working on a way to ensure that, because as as they said, they know it's uh, crucial for student success.
I thought all of them had it.
Yeah, so these two students, like there's three students in this group, I think. The two students that are mainly like working on this are from ACMA. And ACMA, I'm pretty sure they they don't have this program, and that's why they were like, that's why they kind of created this initiative.
So it's that, and then a full use of access tutorial about.
Know that school well.
Okay.
Um, and there's, I, so there's some things I think that we could talk about.
Okay.
That would be really good to talk about.
And then I think too, the idea was even in places where there is an access tutorial or a study hall. How can it, how can students utilize it in a way that allows them, because a lot of times students will be in that one period and maybe not able to.
And if it, like at one of the schools, if it happens to fall on a Wednesday, that means it's always an SEL and it's always instruction. Because we ha, we keep asking so much of our teachers to do so much that. We have this curriculum from the Department of Education or these standards from the Department of Education, we must teach these. Physics, no. Language arts, no. Tutorial, yes. Like we ask more and it's the only, it's like this weird void space. But it's not, what I'm hearing from the students is it's not a void space. It's a very powerful space for students and teachers to connect. And instead of adding more to that, protecting it from those added learning targets.
I think that would be a really good one to bring to the principal and work with the principal on, because I think it's a unique space of ninety minutes where students. And parents are in charge of whatever happens in that ninety minutes. So um, I think there's some, some interesting, who says that could happen?
At all schools or just the one that?
Every other day, it's a ninety-minute block that I, as a parent, need to send.
Well, but at some of the schools, that ninety-minute period every other day is used for other instruction. So it's super messy. That's such a good idea, but I love that they're seeing it as such a powerful tool. So, thank you.
I have to go. So I think um, we have some good steps and maybe um, next time we can schedule another one to follow up with what you see is happening before the end of the year. Um, and maybe hear from that group as well to see what, if maybe with the principal or with you and the staff. But um, and then one last thing I want to say is that we were, with leadership, she has been talking about, and Susan Weber has brought this up for years. We want to figure out how to get students on the school board, on board, like as part of our board. Um, and whatever, like a school board mem, like a board member, not a voting member, but a board member.
I know California has lots of those, right?
Yeah, and so there's many, um.
Fieldsville.
There's districts here in Oregon that have them too. So we're just trying to figure out what model we want to use. And so maybe your group should be a group to help us see through that. And um, we, we're at the OSBA, um, and they gave us different models, like there's sheets that they have of like different ways to do it. But knowing we have a lot of high schools and.
OSBA is Oregon School.
Oh, sorry, Oregon School Board. So that's something we'd like to talk to you about.
It's just a suggestion, since we have in general, uh, having all the school, uh, schools meet once a month for that kind of stuff. We could, uh, a suggestion for you guys is, since of those meetings, you could always have. That student that you select to be part of the board, be part of those meetings to get all feedback from all different schools.
And maybe you're, you're, you all are selecting the student that comes, you know, like you're be part of the selection committee as well.
Or it could also be a real part of the committee itself.
Of your committee has, and I mean, there's many different ways. I I might be really, like, I have all these ideas, but I know that we're at a time and want to honor that for people, but.
I can talk to some, I know a couple of people that are actually represented on their school board from like California. So I can talk to them and we can maybe figure that out by maybe next month. I could talk to that about that.
Yep, that's great, so. Well, thank you for your time, really. For getting them through, Sarah. Okay, thanks to the teacher, administrator leader that's on the, you know, taking this time on.
I mean, she's there at every meeting. By the way, she's there at every meeting.
And was there the last couple of years too. It was amazing. So thank you so much.
Is it okay to say that, like, this is literally the favorite part of most of her jobs, I think? Not that we don't love the other parts.
Pick these topics that are of importance to you and our students, and that's what we want to make sure we're addressing the needs of students. So with that said, I call the uh, school board, February twenty-second school board meeting or retreat group closed at six oh nine P M.